I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council Order, be able to begin tonight. The pledge of allegiance is led by Councilman Natasha Britton.
I would like to give this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Gatlove, present.
Councilwoman Green, present.
Councilman Hersberg, here.
Pro-Tech Lanko, here.
Councilman McDermott, present.
Councilwoman Rakowski, present.
President Hart, present.
A quorum is present.
So, welcome back. So, it's good to see everybody smiling faces again after a few months. So, please bear with me as I'm learning to operate my audio podium again in control. So, it's a little different from Zoom. So, thank you. We do have some announcements and presentations tonight. We'll begin first with Chief Jedrusick. I think we wanted to have you explain to everybody how the fireworks ordinance works.
Thank you, Council President. What I wanted to do is just kind of take a quick opportunity to remind our residents that the Fourth of July holiday is coming up.
Does it sound like that's echoing, sir? Or does that sound okay? It's just really loud down.
Okay. So, we'll remind everybody about the Fourth of July holiday. And what's really important is that we want everyone to enjoy themselves, but you've got to remember to be safe this holiday season and keep the ordinance in mind. And I just wanted to take a quick second to review the ordinance with our residents. This year, the Fourth of July, or under the ordinance, the days that fireworks are permissible are June 29th until July 4th. The hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. It's not permissible to use fireworks before or after those dates. Because we receive so many complaints every year, the Westland Police Department continues to strictly enforce the ordinance. Using fireworks outside the permitted days and times is a civil infraction, but can cost up to $1,000. It's such a steep penalty because fireworks outside of those anticipated hours affect so many people, specifically our veterans and animals. So, the last thing I just want to request is that everyone kind of keeps that in mind this year. Enjoy your holiday, be safe, adhere to the ordinance. And then if you are a resident, it's going to call because there is an issue with the fireworks. What we request out of our residents is that it's just know that it's very difficult for the police officers to find the violators when we have a very broad area. If somebody calls and says that there's a firework violations in the area of Wayne and Warren, it's difficult for us to find it. So, we really ask that you give us specific addresses or locations of where the violations are taking place, and we'll certainly send cars out to handle those. But again, just be safe and enjoy the holiday.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have State Representative Kevin Coleman with an update.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Really nice to see you in person. Just been waiting a long time for this day to come back and see you all in person myself. And it's always great to be here at Westland City Hall. First, I just want to say how impressed I was with the way the community came together over the course of the last year. I want to thank our police and our firefighters. They worked really hard during this pandemic to frankly save lives and make sure people were safe. And the mayor, the administration, the department had city council, city employees, residents, churches, so many community groups that came together to help each other out during so many people's time of need. So, I just wanted to say it really impressed me how the Westland community came together. And it's great that we can be back here in person. I just want to tell you a little bit about what I've been working on in Lansing on your behalf. Two of my bills have passed the House so far this year. One is HB 4343. It makes sure that veterans who passed can be honored properly with a bugler at their funeral. This was a student bugler. So, if a student is leaving school and misses school in order to play taps at a veteran's funeral, they would get an automatic excused absence. So, this is something that our former state representative, Bob Kazowski, introduced. I put it forward, and I saw no reason to make sure that we get this through the House. So, this was passed, and I'm hoping to work on that, getting that through the Senate in the next year. And hopefully, the governor will sign it. And then another one was part of a package of bills to reduce overly harsh punitive punishments for minor infractions. Mine was to make sure that misdemeanors involving snowmobiles wouldn't have any jail time, they would just be a ticket. So, it's just part of a larger package that would make sure that we're not putting people in jail who don't deserve to be put in jail. Then we have another bill that I'm working on. It hasn't passed the House yet, but it would reimburse local governments for their property tax exemptions for fully disabled veterans. So, right now, disabled veterans get a full property tax break. The state should be the one picking up that tab, though. The state has all kinds of money. Local governments are hurting, and we want to make sure that we're fully funding that tax exemption, you know, on your behalf. Something that Governor Whitmer announced recently is the, she wants to, in this upcoming budget, propose that we finally eliminate the funding gap between Michigan's lowest-funded schools, the ones that are lowest-funded, and then the ones who have the per pupil maximum. So, this would be a big difference for our school district. I've worked really hard to make sure that we get additional funding for Wayne Westland Schools. They're on the lower tier of the funding. We want to make sure we bring that up with some of our neighbors who are getting a lot more funding per pupil. So, that's going to be something that I'm going to be pushing for really hard during this budget cycle. Another piece that the governor announced last week was the creation of the Michigan High Speed Internet Office. So, this would ensure that all Michigan homes and businesses have access to high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet. During the pandemic, we've seen how important internet is for things like education and jobs, but it's not equitable throughout our state. So, there's some areas of our state that have no providers or only one provider, and bills could be double or triple the amount for people who live in communities like ours where we have choices. So, I'm proud to join my colleagues in offering a series of bills to help with this new office and to make sure that we achieve some of these goals. I'll be introducing that bill this week. I'll just keep it short here. One more thing that we're looking at is some changes to the auto no-fault law. There are some people who are in catastrophic accidents, people who need home health care, et cetera, that could lose some of their coverage. So, we are pushing really hard to make sure that the changes to the law that roll out this summer don't affect these people negatively. And then lastly, I'll just finish and say the House and Senate are working very hard with Governor Whitmer on the budget. We're seeing a lot more cooperation this year. The state is in a much better financial situation than we anticipated it would be a year ago. So, that's good news to all of us. It should be good news to our school districts and our cities. And instead of facing a $2 billion deficit in the general fund, we're now seeing $3 billion in additional funds as a result of the American Rescue Plan. So, I'm going to advocate for more investment in our local communities, more investment in our schools, and of course, our infrastructure, which is a big, huge hurdle in our state. We know our roads, bridges, and tunnels could use a whole lot of work. One of the major things that our office pushed really hard and did spend a lot of our energy working on over the course of the last year was unemployment insurance. During the pandemic, we estimate that we helped about 1,500 families here in Wayne and Westland alone, just to get their access to their unemployment. It's not usually the job of a state representative, but this is what people really needed help with. As far as constituent services goes, we put all our energy into doing that. Now, we're moving more towards a policy-based approach. But we are still helping people with all these kinds of things. If you have any ideas about bills you'd like us to work on, any input, feel free to get ahold of me anytime. If you have somebody who needs help with unemployment, give me a call. Our phone number is (517) 373-2576.[697.20][697.20](517) 373-2576. I am going to be talking with Commissioner Anderson about resuming our coffee hours in the fall. Hopefully, we can get that on the schedule sooner than later, now that things are opening back up. And I just want to ask you to follow my social media or check online for dates and times. We'll be announcing that hopefully in the next month. On Facebook, you can find me either way. There's a Kevin Coleman State Rep. and a State Rep. Kevin Coleman, State Representative Kevin Coleman. So, check on there, and we'll be announcing coffee hour soon. Just once again, great to see everybody. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Representative. Next, I have Kyle Mulligan, Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, council and the residents of Westland. On Monday, May 24th, the American Red Cross came to City Hall to hold a blood drive with the Westland community. Knowing the competitive nature of the police and fire departments, we wanted to see which force held the competitive edge. And after a full day of appointments, the American Red Cross was able to take 35 donations, which equates to over 90 lives that can potentially be saved thanks to these important donations. So, thank you again to everybody who donated at the blood drive. If I could just have both Fire Chief Morris and Police Chief Jeff Jedrusick come down to the podium, I'd like to announce the winner, who now holds bragging rights to the blood donor championship. The winner of the blood donor championship trophy goes to Chief Jeff Jedrusick and the Westland Police Department. Thank you to both chiefs and their departments, as well as the community, for coming out and supporting the Red Cross and Westland's first responders. Chief Jedrusick?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Kyle. Next, we have Vic Barra, City Westland Facilities Director.
Greetings, council. Glad to be back in person, see everybody's smiling face, as Council President mentioned. Right now, I'm not wearing my Facility Director hat, though, however. Yeah, we should hide that here. We'll do that. I'm here as Wayne Ford Civic League President, and the folks that are joining me up here are members of my executive board. I know this is a big agenda, so I'm going to try to be brief, but there's a couple of things I just want to share with everybody. Seventeen years ago, we took on, as an organization, three-quarters of $1 million worth of debt, an enormous task. That's something I really wanted to take on, but some fool made a comment that I could not do it. So, here I am today. One year ago, I hoped to be standing before council, doing exactly what we're going to do today. But of course, we all know COVID interrupted all of our lives and kind of shifted gears and put us on a different track for the last year and a half. But fortunately, we've been back open, and in the meantime, the organization is now, I'm proud to say, solvent, debt-free, and we're prepared to start giving back in large sums to our community, and that's why we're here today. So, what I'd like to do, after I introduce my lovely wife, Lori, because I want to have a place to sleep tonight, we're going to invite up the representative from the Firefighters Charity to come on up. I've got a gift from the executive board and the members of the Civic League for you. We're proud to present to the Westland Firefighters Charity Fund a check for $5,000. If you could take a moment to share with the public what you guys do.
For sure. Brian Schwazing, member, Firefighters Local 1279. This money's going to go a long way. As Vic said, COVID has shut down pretty much everything for last year, so we have been unable to hold our annual big-money events, including our Brian Wilkie Annual Ball. We haven't been able to do our fill-the-boo drive for MDA and the intersections over the last year. The firefighters raise a crazy amount of money in a number of different ways, whether it's growing mustaches and wearing pink shirts for cancer research, playing softball games with ladies at John Glenn, riding across the state of Michigan on a bike for Make-A-Wish, again, our annual Brian Wilkie Memorial Ball, which has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars. This money is going to help us help the community, whether it's building wheelchair ramps, helping families after fires or some kind of tragic incident. So, aside from us helping on our runs during our daily duties, we are out there doing things for the community on our own time with a full heart. So, thanks again.
You're welcome. All right. Next, I'd like to invite down our Fire Chief, Jim Morris. I've got a little gift for the Fire Administration Public Awareness Committee. On behalf of the Wayne Ford Civic League Executive Board and members, I'm proud to present the chief with a check for the Fire Administration Public Awareness Committee of $5,000.
Thanks again, Vic. Definitely much appreciated. The funds here, they go a long way in the community. They participate in the smoke alarm program for senior and low income. They do fire relief for fire victims that don't have the necessary resources to recover. And over the first two years, a lot of the proceeds went to Westland veterans. They've purchased scooters for disabled vets and wheelchair elevators. And last year's proceeds went to a lot of the businesses that were affected by COVID and had troubles with their finances. So, we appreciate it. It goes a long way. Thank you.
You're welcome, Chief. Thank you. All right. Last but not least, you know, that's one half of our first responder team that has done an absolutely amazing job with the COVID crisis. I've been proud to work side by side with both groups throughout this crisis. Like I said earlier, we all kind of took a different track when COVID came in and roles and responsibilities shifted. So, right now, I'd like to invite Chief Jedrusick down. We've got a little something for the Westland Police Community Partnership. Chief, on behalf of the Wayne Ford Civic League, the membership and the executive board, I'm proud to present the Police Community Partnership with a check for $10,000.
Well, you know, I don't just say that's absolutely amazing, Vic, and your organization. Thank you. The Westland Police Community Partnership, it's a nonprofit. We have a 501(c)(3). Basically, the focus of our program has always been charitable and education, especially right now with kind of the climate we have in this country with, you know, law enforcement. It's very important for us to just build the relations, foster relationships between police and the community, and that's really what we use this organization for, everything from coffee with a cop to our open houses to sponsoring families at Christmas. So, it's going to go a long way. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Chief. All right. Thank you, council, for the time, and I'll get back to my regular job. Chief, we'll see you later.
Okay. Couple administrative notes for the consent calendar. Item F has been withdrawn from the petitioner. Item F has been withdrawn from the petitioner, so it will not be included in our consent calendar today. And also, a note that I forgot to relay, and I apologize. The mayor will be here. He's at his daughter's graduation, her commencement high school graduation, so he will be here as soon as that's over. So, he will be on his way. With that, we'll open up to comments or inputs on the agenda. Citizens are invited to speak up to three minutes on any item on the agenda. It must be on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. Your questions, if asked, will be answered during that agenda item after it has been moved and supported from the council. So, with that said, is there anyone on my right who has input on the agenda? Please.
Good evening. My name is Emily Baumann, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I am actually referencing items K, L, and M in the consent calendar. First, I want to say I think proclamations of these sorts with the intention of raising awareness of groups within our community or illnesses our residents are or could be suffering from are important. Likewise, being aware of one another and showing care and compassion is a great way to bring a community together. My question, though, has to do with possibly just not understanding how some things work and how they get on a consent calendar versus being in regular business. And I don't know if they showed up in a meeting previously, and there was discussion, or they were read, introduced, and provided opportunities for discussion, and even for citizens to actually, the residents, to actually say something or reference them at all, so that there could be some conversation with regard to when we approve some of these things. And so, it's a balancing act, I know, in all of these things. And so, my question really is how they get into the consent calendar rather than into the regular agenda items for discussion. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Greetings, council and residents, from God the Father and our Lord Jesus Christ. I was notified at short notice about coming here tonight, so I don't have any notes prepared. Forgive me. I want to acknowledge M specifically. I noticed a young man came up to you guys, signing a little flag there. Just to show our hands, residents and council, Bible-believing Christians, Bible-believing Christians?
Amen.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. So, we see in the Bible that it unfortunately condemns this type of behavior, and I just want to make sure that our council and our residents are aware that such behavior condoned or even, you know, coddled in any fashion is an abomination according to Leviticus 1822 and reference also to Deuteronomy 22:5. I don't know if you guys know your Bibles. I can quote these, but I only have a minute or two up here. So, maybe you guys can check on these references on your own. We can see in Proverbs Chapter 18 at verse 16, it says, "Pride goes before destruction, and a haughty spirit before a fall." So, we get prideful about our sin, no matter what type of sin it is, it can cause destruction in our lives. That's why we need Jesus Christ. That's why we need our Lord and Savior, because He saves us, He delivers us from any kind of sin that we're in bondage to. It's important that we have Bible-believing Christians in the council because we need folks that can be aware and alert to problems that can happen from these types of behaviors, such as suicide awareness. There's suicide in the LGBT community. It's the highest rate amongst any other type of folks, unfortunately. It causes mental, you know, behaviors that starts to cause them, you know, unfortunately not to be responsible with their way of thinking. So, that being said, also, that I believe that, you know, many of us maybe not understand. I know I wore a hat in here. It says, "Fear God." You guys are probably like, "What does that mean?" Well, Jesus told us, you know, "But I will forewarn you whom ye shall fear; fear him whichafter he hath killed hath power to cast into hell; ye hast sand ye fear him," in Luke 12:5. The reason why I'm bringing out that scripture is because we've got to have a very strong reverence and fear of God for our eternal life, because after this, no matter what position we hold in life, we're going to be held accountable to a higher standard. There is a lawgiver that's even higher than us, right? So, we want to acknowledge the Lord and Savior, and we want to give ourselves to Him, each one of us. I know that maybe there's not a, I'm not here often enough, and I apologize for that. I do a lot of evangelism.
Thank you, sir. There's your three minutes left. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone out in, there we are, all the way in the back. Faster.
I know. I didn't sit yard in the city. It took me a minute to get here. Hi, my name's Tony. I would like to make my opposition to item M known, and I'd like to have it removed from the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone on my right? Sir?
Trying to get better at this, Councilman. President Hart, can I comment on item five that's here? Is that appropriate?
It's on the agenda. You can comment on it. Yep.
Yeah, I'm trying to correct my game. So, I see here on the Barnes and Robert's that should be held in August on a Saturday. I have no problem with that, but I feel that the event needs to be more accessible. I did attend the event last year with multiple friends in group homes. It was very hard. The people didn't look like they had this place, there was like communication. People felt, you know, that they couldn't feel, but there was like the wheelchair thing. It was just a really, really event. And when you have visions or sound things especially, I think there should even be an area dedicated to group homes and their staff. So, that is what I would actually recommend and hope that maybe you guys can work something out with the Disorder and Concern Board to work on the event. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone on my left? Your right. Anyone in the back? You only get three minutes, sir. Yep. Anyone in the back? On here in the right, on my right, your left. Yes, sir.
Blessings. I'm Pastor Edward Pruitt, and I am going to speak on two agenda items. The first one is going to be on the new business number six, and then I will speak on agenda item M. Agenda item, or new business item six, this is the proposed fiscal year budget. I am concerned about the budget being approved. There were no real question asked about line items within the budget. There was a lot of attaboys, and we need to have a honest and earnest conversation around it. We need to make sure that the community is fully involved and understand what is going forth. This is supposed to be a budget that is balanced, but once it's approved, there's already agenda items to be added to it and adjustments. We cannot continue to deceive the public with fake proposals being put forth and changed later. Agenda item M, I specifically brought that up because I am a pastor. I am a pastor who understands the Bible inside and out, and we must understand that with this agenda item, which I do support, this agenda item is one of inclusion. We must look at our community and understand that our community has a broad range of people, and we must accept people as they are. We must move forward with this agenda item, and we must... We must move forward with this agenda item, and we must make sure that we are showing the love that we are supposed to show. So I support this agenda item. It is time that we stop abusing people with the Bible. It is time that we stop abusing people with Christianity. At this point, we need to understand what the Bible says, and the Bible says, "Show love, be inclusive," and so I support this agenda item.
All right, no disruptions, please, thank you. All right, is, I was just to the back, anybody on my right? I'm gonna move, anybody on my left? Now in the back. Sir.
Good evening, my name's Ron Sterniak, and I want to talk about agenda item F, M. I am opposed to it, as opposed to what I just heard. I want to read from 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 9 and 10. "Or do you not know that wrongdoers will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither the sexually immoral, nor idolaters, nor adulterers, nor men who have sex with men, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor drunkards, nor slanderous swinders, will inherit the kingdom of God." This isn't about pride. Pride, all people deserve respect and should be treated fairly, but for us to honor people who are going against the Word of God, I'll not do that, and I challenge you people to not do it as well. Thank you.
Okay, anybody on my right? Here, sir.
Item B, and, and item M, so, under Blues, Brews, and Barbecue, I would like to know how will we accommodate people with disabilities that will be attending that event? Also, I support M, and we should move forward with that. God loves, loves all people.
Okay, anyone on my left? And anyone in the back? All the way, all the way in the back? Yep, you. Right, not you, Ray, I'll get you next, on the next go around. Even with masks, it's even harder, so.
I'm still carrying my mask.
No worries.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jen Korleski, I'm a member of the business community, and also on the library board, and I came here just to see everyone's wonderful faces, and then read the agenda on the way in. I would love to share that I am abundantly in support of item M. It's about time, and, I'm sorry, having so many friends in the community that are of this LGBTQIA+ is so imperative that we support this, and we support our friends and neighbors, so I just wanted to be a voice and share that. It's wonderful to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'd like to speak against item M. In our pledge, we say, "One nation under God," if we truly believe that, then we will look to the one true living God, and that is the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus Himself says that sexual relations are restricted to the marriage bed, between one man and one woman, he quotes Genesis. So any pastor or minister who proclaims to be a Bible believing Christian does not serve the Lord Jesus Christ, but serves Satan. He's a minister of the devil, who rejects the whole counsel of God and tramples on the blood of Jesus Christ. If we are going to have reverence for God, if we are going to love our neighbors and those in our community, then we need to look to the counsel of God, we need to look to His law and to His commandments. The Bible says the law of the Lord is perfect, converting the soul, and if we're gonna see changes in our community, then we need to see a heart change, and that change is only gonna come from the Lord Jesus Christ, He is the great physician. So, I just would like to encourage us today that there's at least eight different scriptures that talk about and condemn homosexuality, and it's an abomination to our children and to our city to move forward with item M. Thank you.
All right, anybody on my left? Sir.
With regards to line 9 and M, I don't think it's very fair for anybody to elevate their sin above anybody else's sin. We all stand in judgment. To elevate one's sin above another person's sin is an abomination, therefore, in and of itself. We all look at each other as equals, are we not? We all have the same blood. We all share the same genetic makeup, so it's not a question of sexuality, what we do in our own bedrooms. It's a question, immoral status of elevating someone else's moral, or immoral, or immoral status, above someone else's. That is why I, I don't support line M, and I think it should be stricken from approval. Thank you.
All right, Ray, I saw you had your hand up last time, so I'm just gonna call you.
I want to come over to the center a little bit, and talk about a couple of these-
As long as it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, all of these interesting things you're talking about today. Well, number one is that B, I was curious about that, because with the barbecue and that, we've always made sure that people with disabilities too, and accessibility of wheelchairs and stuff, it makes it easy for them to get around there, too. Number two is talking about that M. We have our own beliefs, and everyone has their own beliefs. Our beliefs, don't matter who we are, or who they are, everybody has, and should be respected. You know, each church has their own different beliefs, and I don't have nobody, you know, I don't expect nobody to put a Bible in front of my face or somebody else's, because that's wrong. So everyone has their own opinions, it should be kept that way. I support this, and I hope they have it. Thank you.
All right, so now I'm just gonna do, anybody in the audience now, first one I saw, Representative Coleman?
Thanks, I, as a Westland resident, homeowner, taxpayer, I just wanted to get up and say I, I do support item M. I think we are a compassionate city, we're a city that welcomes all people, we love all people here. And I got out to my car, and I thought, you know what, I gotta come back and say that. So, I want to thank you for putting it on the agenda, I want to thank the administration. We love all people here in Westland, and I respect everybody's viewpoints and opinions. I do respect and love everybody, so, once again, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Just speaking as my-
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Drove a little bit to get here. I love my neighbors myself, as the Lord commanded me, right? He says to love your neighbor as yourself. And what it is that I'm against, you know, as far as, you know, making an official month, right, for, you know, honoring those that are in the LGBT community, right, is that, first of all, I'm against any month that is primarily about sexual freedom, right? You know, whether it be man and man, man and woman, man and beast, whatever it is. There are so many things that are so important in this world, that we can dedicate a whole month to. I would love to see a month where we're honored, and where we fought to find the children that go missing, whose parents never see them again, right? Or have a month dedicated to rape victims, right, child molestation, fighting against that, bringing awareness to that, because I know what's gonna happen when we have this type of month, or something like this. There's gonna be great big parades, you know, yay, you know, I get to be gay, I get to, you know, to do this, to get to do that, you have all your freedoms, and then people still hurt, people still suffer, nothing changes, right? Congratulations, we have more gay teachers at school, we have, we have more gay principals, right? But what about the children that are getting molested, right? I could say, for example, right, the, you know, the staggering, staggering rate, right, I didn't bring the exact research with me, of those that are in the LGBT community that have suffered some form of sexual assault or sexual abuse, right? There's no one speaking up for those things. What about a month for that? You know, the staggering homelessness, this is Westland, it's not Detroit, you go down to Detroit, okay, and we see people laying on the middle of the road, God said to love your neighbor as yourself, love your neighbor as yourself. I don't love my neighbor's sexual privileges as my own, right? That's not, I love my neighbor as myself, and I would love to see a month dedicated to people that are homeless. Why does this jump ahead of that? It's out of order, it's wrong. I can say it's sinful, I can say it's against what God wants, if you don't believe the Bible, you're not gonna care, it doesn't matter, right? Those that don't love the Lord, they're not gonna love what He says, but if God touches your heart, if you put anything inside of your heart, anything inside of you, to love your neighbor, to love those that are suffering, I'm telling you, there are so many more people that need a voice, so many more people that need a month dedicated to their suffering, to their victimhood. We don't have to celebrate homosexual sex.
Okay, sir, that's your time, three minutes, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, please.
Good evening, Council, this is Candy Halton. I support item number M, and I support it based off my Christian belief in John 3:16, where it says, "God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever should believe in Him should not perish, but have everlasting life." So with that much being said, we gotta continue to love one another, no matter what our beliefs are, no matter what saying we do, we still need to love one another. So I wanted to touch on that, and say thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience? I see no hands, so I will close citizens' input on the agenda, we move to the consent calendar, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman McDermott. Before we go in, there was question, questions asked that are answerable, were for item B, Kyle, regarding ADA access during the Blues Brews and Barbecue. Are you prepared to answer any of those questions right now? Can you please do so?
Hello, Councilman.
Hold on, let me make sure your mic's on, help me out, Craig. Nope. I think your desk four, try that. We'll keep going down.
Good?
There we are.
I can hear me, okay. We do have shuttle transportation to and from the Blues Brews and Barbecue site, they can contact the mayor's office to coordinate that with naked transit, and then there are wheelchair ramps across the access sites as well, so I hope that answers any questions.
Okay, thank you. Now we move, is there any discussion? I see some hands are raised, there are discussion from the supporter, Councilman McDermott?
I just wanted to say I'm in full support of item M, and looking forward to, you know, voting on that and bringing, you know, tolerance and inclusivity further into our city here in the, in the city of Westland, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Councilwoman Rukowski, done? Which ones? Oh, thank you, that was on my list, that was my question to answer, so I will answer that question really quick. Councilwoman Green, I see your hand raised, I'll get you right there. How it works is the agenda items do get put forward by the administration, the council leadership sits down, and then they put forward things on the consent calendar, or things on new business. We at that point have a decision to move things if we want to, as the leadership on the agenda, but at any time, the council body here can move any item off the consent calendar into new business. So, we put those things on the consent calendar, we think they're generally routine, or widely accepted, but if someone wants to remove them, they have that opportunity to remove them at new business, actually at this juncture right here. So I hope that answered your question. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I would like to start by saying that I am a Christian woman, I have been raised in Christianity my entire life, and I, I do not agree with passing judgment on other people, because they happen to be different. I think if a video camera, I'm a firm believer that if a video camera crew were to follow any of you around in your personal lives 24 hours a day, whether it's at what you choose to engage in at home, what you watch on TV, what you do at work, or what you choose to do after 5 o'clock, if that were to happen in your lives, many of you would be completely embarrassed, and probably would not come pub, attend public meetings in a manner to question the lifestyle of other individuals, but when we can get dressed up, and we can bring things in, that adds validity to our position, then we're put in a position to, in my opinion, pass judgment on other people. I'm gonna read you a text message I received tonight from a Westland resident that I respect very much, by the way, and I will not mention this person's name. The text message says, "Please vote against agenda item M tonight. As a Christian, I hope you will make the right decision." And my response to this person was, "I am a Christian, but I do not put myself or my beliefs in a position to act like I'm God over other people's lives. None of us are perfect, and the Bible also says not to judge people, and that vengeance belongs to God, not to man. The gay community is a reality in society, and I believe that they should have the freedom to live their lives without being discriminated against. Knowing what that feels like as a black woman, I won't stand in opposition to allow a group that is different from me the right to be recognized in a city that they live in and pay taxes in. They are people first, and that's what matters to me, not a sexual preference among consenting adults." And so I say that to say, there were people who fought in the same manner that some of you are standing in opposition tonight, though, there were people who fought against Black History Month, when it was put on the floor for legislators to make that type of recognition for the African-American community. There were people who still today fight against Martin Luther King Day being a national holiday. In my opinion, discrimination is discrimination, and it's wrong, all, 100% together, whatever the difference is. People have the right to be who they are without judgment. The Bible also says, in Proverbs 6, verse 9 says, or excuse me, Matthew 7, verse 1, speaking as a Christian woman, "Judge not that you not be judged; for with the judgment you pronounce, you will be judged, and with the measure you use, it will be measured unto you." The resolution tonight is simply a declaration to the LGBTQ+ community that simply says, "Hey, we see you, we acknowledge you, we are not against you, you are free to be yourself, I am free to stand on my values and be myself, and we can all get along just fine," in the midst of being different. And I would like to thank a Westland resident by the name of Ashley Stevens, who is not here tonight, who took it upon herself to establish the first Facebook page for the LGBT community in the city of Westland, a community that has no representation in the city of Westland. And if, unless you have ever been put in a position to have no representation for your own community, which many of you have never experienced that, unless you have experienced firsthand what it feels like to be underrepresented, and underrepresented is a nice way of saying that you're just invisible to the powers that be, unless you have ever been discriminated against just simply for, on a, on a regular, consistent basis, for just existing, you are not in a holy position to pass judgment on the differences, you have every- You have every right to stand on your principles and keep them first in your life, but if that differs from the life of someone else, you have no right to pass judgment on them or to discriminate on them. And with that being said, I stand in agreement with item M, and I accept and represent all the citizens of Westland. Thank you.
As a reminder, thank you. As a reminder, discussion during consent calendar should be moved off, so if there's any deliberation on the items on the consent calendar, that's when they would get moved off to new business. So appreciate the comments, I know it's, it's an important topic, just let's go ahead and try and recognize consent calendar for what it is. Is there any other discussion on the consent calendar? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held May 17, 2021. Approval to hold the 10th Annual Blues Brews and Barbecue Event on Central City Park Grounds Friday, August 6, and Saturday, August 7, between 3:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. Approval of bid for interactive kiosk display system. Administration recommended the low bidder. Add savvy digital signage, total amount not to exceed $12,100, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for Manufacturers Drive and Enterprise Drive Rehabilitation Services. Administration recommended the low bidder. Florence Cement, total amount not to exceed $535,633.40. Approval of bid for DPS Compound and Facility Contractor Services. Administration recommended the low bidder. Sole Building Company, total amount not to exceed $132,650, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city, city attorney rather, and executed by the vendor. Approval of workers' compensation package agreement with Willis Towers Watson Midwest Incorporated for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for the city's self-insured program. The agreement is for a one-year term effective July 1, 2021, in the amount of $82,702. Approval of workers' compensation third-party administrator agreement with Comprehensive Risk Services LLC. The agreement is for a three-year term effective July 1 through June 30, I'm sorry, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, in the amount of $21,930 annually. Introduction of Ordinance 248-A108. An ordinance to amend Ordinance 248 to show G A R district classification, where C B 1 district classification is now shown in the city of Westland, Wayne County, described as parcel 007010599307, north side of Warren Road, west of Merriman. This rezoning was approved by city council April 19, 2021. Adoption of Prepared Land Division and Combination Resolution on Beatrice Street. There were two parcels on the west side of Beatrice between McKenzie and Merritt, this was planning department number 2247. This land division and combination was approved by city council April 19, 2021. Adoption of Westland Proclamation to Proclaim June Michigan Sclardoma Awareness Month in the city of Westland. Adoption of City of Westland Proclamation to Proclaim September, turn the town's teal awareness month in the city of Westland. Adoption of Prepared Resolution to Declare June 2021 LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Westland. The last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of transfer of hazards and boardup fees to the property taxes for the summer 2021 tax bill. Moving to new business. Item 1. Confirmation of Appointment of Chris Galatas to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council to fill an unexpired term with the term to expire December 31, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Welcome. Hold on, Mayor, let's get your microphone out. There you go, he should be out, Mayor.
Good evening. Sorry I'm joining you late, and hopefully you passed along the word, is it my daughter's graduation, so?
I did.
All right, I appreciate that. I'm slowly settling in over here, quickly settling in, I should say, but I have not had a chance to see if Chris is in the audience tonight. All right.
Evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Would you like me to?
So Chris, if you took a look at the packet, you see he's obviously a very well-qualified, he's a Parks and Recreation professional for the city of Gross Point Farms, and he comes highly recommended by our former budget director, Deb, Deb Peck, who's the budget director there, so Westland resident, I think he'll bring a great voice and be a big help for us in Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Chris, anything you want to offer?
No, I'm just glad to be able to kind of lend my services and be a helpful hand. I don't want to interfere with what's going on in the director that is currently here by any means, so I don't want any, any feelings of that, but if I can be of any help, I am a Westland resident, my kids do programs and everything like that, so I'm just looking forward to helping any way that I can, so glad to be a part of it.
Wonderful. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
New business. Item 2. Confirmation of Appointment of Carrie Beebe to the Westland Board of Review to fill a vacant position as an alternate for a three-year term with the term to expire June 7, 2024.
Motion by Councilman Londo. Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor, do you have anything to offer?
Just real quick, I'm not sure if Ms. Beebe's with us here tonight. There she is. If you take a look at her, her resume here, her background is in accounting, and she's also a driver and owner of a drag race team, which is why MJ thought this should be a great addition to the Board of Review. But one of the things that we've been trying to do is, is to bring diversification to our boards and commissions. This is one of our boards that we did not have any females serving, and Ms. Beebe, we sat down with her and the assessor, Jen sat down with her too, and we think that she'd be a great asset to the board, so thank you for offering to serve.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Anything to offer?
No, I think so.
Kind of car do you race?
1968 Chevelle.
You and I are gonna be friends. All right, is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
New business. Item 3. Confirmation of Reappointment of Mayor William R. Wild as Delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Motion by Councilman Godbout.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor.
Item 4. Confirmation of Reappointment of Steve Smith as alternate delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Sorry, Steve.
New business. Item 5. Adoption of Prepared Resolution authorizing the city of Westland to apply for a two-day liquor license from the state of Michigan to allow the sale of beer and wine at the annual Blues Brews and Barbecue Event to be held Friday, August 6, and Saturday, August 7, 2021, on Central City Park Grounds.
Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion? Councilwoman Rukowski, no? Any discussion? Oh, you do, Councilman Londo.
Thank you very much. I'm just really looking forward to having our events back here in the, in the community. I know the mayor and his executive team or events team have been hard at work at making sure we're safe and make sure we have a great event. I know we were one of the first to announce our events, and now like the mayor said, they're starting to kind of, starting to pop up left and right all across southeast Michigan, so I'll be attending as always, and I encourage our residents to attend as well.
Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 6. Adoption of 2021 through 2022 Proposed Fiscal Year Budget. The public hearing for the budget was held May 3, 2021.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion by Councilman McDermott. Supported by Councilman Londo. Council, just to make things very easy, I mean, when you have a motion, just say it verbally in your last name. Don't rely on the ticker, because it's just way too confusing doing it that way, because then I'm looking for discussion, and I don't know if you moved it or not, so if you have a motion, just say motion, last name, support, last name, that'll make it very easy for me. So moved by Councilman McDermott, supported by Pro Tem Londo.
Mayor, Steve?
Thank you, council president. You guys were making a sweat at there for a minute on this, on the motion, so I appreciate you jumping in there, councilmen. Council, I know we've talked a lot about the budget, we presented it back to you in April 1st, we've had the public meeting, but just, just a real quick, just a couple highlights of the budget. It is a $70 million balanced budget, it does protect a rainy day surplus of $6.6 million. The budget, it does not include any of the recently received American Rescue Plan money, and we'll be talking more about that over the next few weeks and few months. Council, we did add in the $10,000 neighborhood beautification grant that was proposed by council during the budget session. It does have the funding in it for our 13 Safer, our federally funded firefighters, to continue through the year, the fiscal year 22, 23. We, all throughout the budget, we incorporated the recently approved MERS pension bonds throughout the department, which reduced our pension payments. The budget also contributes another $500,000 towards our OPEB number, that's our retiree healthcare contribution. We did put in $150,000 to allocate, to offer cash incentives to retirees, to get off the retirement healthcare. There's $4.2 million in the budget for various road repair projects throughout the city, 26 neighborhoods are gonna be touched, and 70 roads. Water and sewer capital outlay for the budget is $4.37 million, which will, you'll see work in six different neighborhoods. Then just a couple of the capital investments, a new community police vehicle that we talked about, the, one of the new Ford F-150 electric Lightning pickups, when they're available, a new dog park, which will be created on Marquette Street over by the DPS yard, and the city's first four pickleball courts, which will be located in Corrato Park. Council, we appreciate your time, I appreciate the, the department heads, finance department did a great job. Last year, when we had to get the budget to you, we were actually a little bit late because of the shutdown for city hall, but this year, they were right on time, they put together a nice budget, and we appreciate your support here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I have discussion from Pro Tem Londo.
Thank you, President Hart, thank you, Mayor, for that lengthy explanation of our budget. As the mayor stated, we had two or three sessions right here at city hall, that was kind of our way to open it back up face-to-face meetings, and I thought they were very well put together, a lot of questions were asked, regardless of what was said at the podium earlier. A lot of questions were asked in private, too. You know, we have access to our directors pretty much 24/7, thanks to the mayor, via email, text, stopping at city hall, so we asked our questions during the budget sessions, we asked them privately in their offices. I have a lot of questions, they can, they can vouch for that, and I appreciate all of them, you know, getting with me privately or publicly and answering those questions for me, and I'll be in support.
Councilman McDermott?
Well, good evening, thank you. I will also be in support of the budget. This is not a perfect document, and it's not a wish list where I, as one individual person, get everything I would ever want. This is a budget that we've come together on, seven individuals, the mayor and the administration, and most of all, the community, you, the residents, and the taxpayers that we serve. We get your input, we get your thoughts, we get your ideas through two budget study sessions, and through the other 363 days of the year, when you call us, you email us, you come up to council meetings like this. So to be sure, this is not a perfect document, but this is something that does a lot of good in moving our community forward in the right direction, and supporting and improving the quality of life for residents across the community. One thing that I heard from a number of residents, and one thing I want to thank our police chief, Jeff Brusakon, is we wanted to have a budget that is not only supportive of public safety and making sure that our community is safe, but that also represents the, the changing guard in public safety and in law enforcement. And in this budget, we have adopted, thanks to the work of the chief and members of our Westland Police Department, adding a social worker to the city of Westland, and also domestic violence advocate in the police department, and this budget supports those kinds of reforms that we are looking to make here in the city. Those are things that I personally support, and that when I've talked to residents all across the community, that they support. So this budget has a lot of progressive and forward-thinking ideas in it that it's supporting, as well as just your standard bare things of parks and recreational services, senior services, our public safety, so that when you call 911, we have officers there to respond, that we have firefighters there when you're in need, or you're in a medical emergency. So I'm very proud to, to support this budget, even if it doesn't have every little single thing that I would put on my wish list. I want to thank the administration for all the work that went into this, the mayor, and every department head who sat down with me individually, and sat down with all of us collectively as a council, and I want to thank my colleagues up here for all their input and their ideas, and most of all, I want to thank everybody in the community who has called, emailed, come up to a council meeting and spoke about things that they want to see in this budget and in future budgets, and things that they want to see our city invest in. One of the reasons that we have, you know, potentially a dog park coming to the city of Westland is because we are investing it. Your government is investing in your community with this budget to potentially add a dog park here in the city of Westland. So there's a, a lot of good that I'll dive into a little later on in my council comments, but I will be in support of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Discussion or roll call?
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilman Hersberg.
So I'll just start by echoing the comments of Councilman Londo and Councilman McDermott. It's never gonna be a perfect budget, there's just so many elements to it, but there's one thing that I have asked for since my first year on council, and that was to hire a police officer, and, you know, for different reasons, council members, we weren't able to get four to support it, and again, this year, too, and I think the main reason is that we're only adding $80,000 to the rainy day fund, and it's about $100,000 to hire a, a new police officer. But based on the discussion that I had, at least at the meetings and privately with a couple of council members, I want to see council commit to hiring two next year, and we can do that today in this budget. All future years are laid out for the full-time equivalent personnel, and I'd like to make a motion right now to amend the full-time equivalent personnel for the Department of Police from 48 patrol officers to 50 for budget year 2022 and 2023.
There's a motion on the floor for amendment to the budget?
Support.
Which has support. Discussion, Councilman McDermott.
Just wanted to say real quick in support of this, this is something that, you know, I've been on council now a year and a half and through two budget cycles. You know, certainly we've gotten a lot of progressive reforms with regards to law enforcement, adding the social worker, adding the domestic violence advocate, but one thing that I know Councilman Hersberg and a number of us, you know, have talked about year over year is adding, you know, some extra bodies into our, our force. So if we can, you know, especially with, I don't know, you know, the American Rescue Plan dollars can go towards this, but some of the additional money that may be freed up as a result of getting federal funds to commit to next year, making some changes with regards to police staffing, I think that's something that we should definitely look into, so I'll be in support.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to speak to that, and I, we have this discussion periodically as this comes up. I would remind council that it was last week that police chief and our grant writer sent a communication to the city council that we're gonna be applying for four police officers through a federal grant, that we're gonna start that now. The money for that, we have to figure out what the, what the city's portion of that's gonna be, but... going to be. But if we, if we all think that we should build up our public safety numbers, police, and I, I do think by talking with all of you guys that you think that's a good idea, I think this COPS grant's the way to go as opposed to making an 11th hour budget amendment change in here where we don't even know where the money's going to come from yet. But with the COPS grant, whenever we've applied, we've got them. And I feel pretty confident that if we apply for this, that we would get those officers. One of the things we talked about in the past is that the police department works on four different, we'll call them either battalions or platoons. So to get an officer on every, if we could get four officers, then that gives us one officer on every shift. If we get two officers, one officer, then, then it kind of throws our numbers out of whack. But at the end of the day, the administration is supportive of applying for the COPS grant. And I think that that is probably a better way to, to address, if we're going to fund additional full-time police officers, I think that that's probably the, the better way to do that. And it's something that I would be supportive of. Once we get an idea what the, the city's contribution for that is going to be, then we can, we can sit down. I believe that the city council will have to vote on the, the grant application. So with that, we could get a chance to look and see when exactly what our contributions are going to be and we can figure out, we can budget for them. Thank you.
Councilman Godvout.
Thanks. I believe that is a discussion on the, the motion that was made.
Discussions on the motion.
The motion was for 22, 23. That motion isn't germane to the discussion on this year's budget. The motion on the floor was for this year's budget. So to fund or to put something in this year's budget that doesn't pertain to this year's budget is, it's just not germane to the, to this year's budget or this discussion on this year's budget. We did have a discussion on adding more police officers and at that point in time, we had discussion on the, the future COPS grant and moving forward with that. And there's, we also discussed having a strategic planning session on our staffing levels for both police and fire. As it stands right now with the Safer grant, we, we need to figure out how we're going to try and keep those firefighters that when the Safer grant runs out, if we don't get an extension or don't get a new grant on it, how we're going to be able to, to absorb and keep those firefighters. The same will hold true with a, with a COPS grant in that, as usually as part of the condition of those grants, you have to keep them for a period of years after the grant expires. So it, it takes more than just making a, a motion at a meeting to say we're going to do this next year, which isn't germane to this current budget. So I will not be in support of that motion.
Actually, thank you, Councilman Godvout. You are correct and I stand corrected and he is correct. It's not germane to the item. So it's actually, the motion's not even a valid motion. So Councilman Hersberg, I'll go ahead and, since I just killed your motion, I'm going to turn it back to you and see if you want to adjust or if you want to address it. So make sure you're trying to find your screen. There it is. Councilman Hersberg, you're...
Okay. Well, since the council president ruled it's not germane, I'll respect his opinion. I have to disagree. This is our budget. Every word and number in this budget can be changed. My motion was to change one number for next year so that when we open up the budget meetings next year, we're budgeted at two more. I can make the motion for this year and, you know, I didn't, I didn't want to do that because we already had these discussions. You know, when it comes to grants, we've gone down that road before and we already know that it doesn't always work. Cops need to make a living just like everybody else. And if their grant, if it expires, excuse me, if it expires next year, they're going to go ahead and apply and look for jobs elsewhere. We've already seen that happen with grants. We haven't hired, we've hired in nearly every other department, you know, since I've been on council. This is the only one where we haven't added any patrol officers. Grants are, you know, that's a good thing if we get a grant, okay. But we need to build up more than just the two or three. We're going to get ARP money. There's enough money in the general fund. We just saved 30 grand by removing that item earlier in the meeting. I believe the money is there and we should find it. So I guess, you know, I'll just redo my motion. I'll, I move to amend the budget for full-time equivalent personnel for the Department of Police patrol officers from 48 to 49 for our budget year 2021, 2022.
Is there a motion? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Green. Is there a discussion? Any discussion? Councilman Londo?
Yeah, just briefly. Through the chair.
You got it?
Trying. There you go.
Through the chair to Councilman Hersberg. You said you don't know where the money's coming from. It is a budget. We have to take the money from somewhere. So where do you suggest we take it from?
Yeah, I just want to turn your, make sure you're on. Getting used to, we should leave these all on. There we are. You're on.
Any changes that we make today without specifically saying where it's coming from is going to come from the general fund or the surplus. And I think you should know that by now.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion?
My light is on.
Just so you know, it's not here. So I apologize. It's not any omission. It's not blinking. So there you are.
Thank you. I actually agree with Councilman Hersberg. As a member of law enforcement myself, I realize how imperative and, and important it is for the police department to have appropriate staffing. I've been on city council four years and every year I've watched the mayor put forward a budget that does not add any manpower to the police department. And in 2019, there was a proposal, excuse me, there was a proposal to cut funding to the fire department, which myself and another councilman who has already retired had to adamantly advocate against that. And so I think saying that we're going to apply for grant funding is nothing more than passing the buck. The police department has been trimmed tremendously. From what I understand, the police force was well over 100 officers, well beyond 100 officers. And we're right around 80 officers on average. And, and I don't think it's appropriate. We can find money in the budget. We, we've approved $45,000 electronic signs to put in front of these buildings and all types of just fluff money. But when it comes to police officers, year after year, we sit in these meetings and we ask for more officers and we always get either, it, it's just never added. And it's always a pass the buck. If we get the grant money, that's awesome. We'll have the opportunity to add even more officers. But to just add one, the request for one new police officer and for us to say, we can't, we don't want to commit to that, but we can commit to, to all different type, multiple newsletters on top of newsletters, on top of all types of fluff spending. So I, I actually stand in support of Councilman Hersberg's recommendation as a member of law enforcement. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with the councilwoman. You know, every year it seems to be something different. You know, they, they tell us, well, we're, we're going to wait because we might do a millage or we're going to wait because we might get a grant. Or the police, you know, they're not in here begging to add another officer. You know, we've kicked the can down the road. I'm fully aware of a full shift is for, if we had hired one every year like I've asked for, we'd be at a full shift already. So my motion stands. That's it.
Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to clarify that the city has, we have hired police officers and we have hired firefighters. What we've done is we've been, we've been conservative and we've utilized opportunities using federal money to help us pay for those. When we, when, when we compare payroll for, for employees to signs and, and other one-time purchases, when we hire an officer, it's a 25-year commitment. So we just have to be prepared because it's not in our, it's not in our interest or our intent to hire an officer than, than lay them off in three years. We have never done that. We have lost officers to other communities and we've received, and we've brought in officers from other communities. So right now, everybody's trying to compete with each other. But at the end of the day, utilizing this federal money for police officers and firefighters has proven to be the best way for the city of Westland to, to hire these officers and, and keep them. As Councilman Godmout had said, we have funding in the, in this budget for 13 federal firefighter grant, 13 firefighters that are paid on a federal grant that the, the money expires in 22, 23. So we're going to have to get creative on how we keep those firefighters and we'll try to do that with attrition and retirements and, and other things. But I am committed to applying for the COPS grant and I do think that that is the smartest way for the city to, to build our force is by utilizing the federal money that's out there. To, to say that we, we would use American Recovery Act dollars, those are, that's one-time money. To do that for payroll costs is probably not, is probably not the way to do that. So, but I know that we, we have this same argument every year and it seems like we haven't talked about the budget. We haven't met on the budget in the last 30 days. But once we get in here to council night, it's always let's make a deal at the last second. So Mr. Hersberg, you were at City Hall all day today. You could have came in our office if you had a proposal and you didn't do that. I'm not sure if you, if you read the document about the COPS grant that the police chief and Ms. Nasserini sent you, because if you did, if you've been on council long enough, you'd have to understand is that's, that's a more prudent way to hire these officers. It gives us a chance to budget for them. And that's something that I would recommend that we do as opposed to this, once we get to the council meeting, let's, let's flip a coin and see if we can't get support at the last second. I just don't think that that's good public policy.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yeah, just briefly. There, there's no reason I would ask you for a proposal. This is a council vote, you know. I did propose it at the budget meeting as well. So I just want to state that for the record. And, you know, council members have different opinions. I respect those opinions. Everybody wants to see it funded differently. So, you know, it is what it is. I have my opinion and I have to stand by it. That's it.
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the mayor's comments about payroll. During the current budget that we're in, the mayor was able to find $40,000 to bump one city employee's salary from $65,000 to $105,000 during COVID. At that time, we had 70, more than 70 city employees out on furlough. So they weren't even working. He found $40,000 for one of his administration members. He also has taken, him and his entire administration has taken a salary increase every time it's a new year. So every time the year changes, everybody gets a pay raise. There's no consideration about, let's look at these dollars and see if we can figure out, if we can apply a little bit more to law enforcement. The, there, it's awes, it's wonderful if we apply for the grant and we get it. But at this point, there is no guarantee. If we happen to get it in the future, that gives us the opportunity to add even more officers. But at this point, for the last four years, and I can't speak for the people who've been here longer than myself, but we have had this conversation every year and every year we can't find funding. But like I said, when it comes to electronic signs and, and that, those are just the things that are coming to mind. I could give you a laundry list of some things that we could have applied to law enforcement. And this is ongoing. The city assessing contract, the, the owner of that company, who was a former Westland City Council person, he got a 33% increase on a more than a half of a million dollar contract that he was already in. And they just locked him in for five years. And council and the mayor found money to give this man and his company a 4% increase every year just because the year changes. They found money for that. They found money for that trash contract that Westland taxpayers bought all of the, the entire fleet of ta, trash trucks for the trash company. At more than $350,000 a truck, we paid for every single truck. Taxpayers put all the gas in that truck. We paid for the insurance on those trucks. We paid for 90% of the repairs on those trucks. And then we paid his company an average of $100,000 a month to come in here and pull our trash. A contract that was unprecedented and no other city would even sensibly enter into. And those are just two of multiple contracts that come through city council and they are completely alarming. And, and they don't ask questions. They just, yep, we'll, we'll do it. No questions to these contractors or the mayor. But when it comes to the police department, we don't have the money. We'll see if we can get a grant. It's not acceptable. They're putting their lives on the line every day. And, and, and that's the most dangerous department in the city of Westland. So to, to request one officer, I think is completely reasonable. I, I believe that saying we can utilize the, the grant funds is a true statement, but it also is a statement that lacks and allows for no accountability. We need police officers now. And I support the recommendation of Councilman Hersberg. Thank you.
Councilman Godvout.
Thanks. We had these discussions during the budget session. There wasn't support during the budget sessions. We had the opportunity to bring back any items that we wanted. And there was a request made if you had items that needed to be further discussed to bring it back so that we could have another study session on it. Trying to change or alter the budget without the, the proper discussion, the proper look at the financials and the implications over the next, not only this year's budget, but the next 20, 25 years worth of budgets, when you start looking at the, the future costs on, on those, is not a responsible way to try and amend or change a budget in the 11th hour. There are plenty of things in this budget that I don't particularly agree with. I voiced my opinions during the study sessions and my colleagues wouldn't support the changes that I recommended. Just like in the past budgets, I've agreed with Councilman Hersberg and tried to get police, an additional police officer in, in other budgets in the past. And we weren't successful in convincing my, our colleagues in order to do that. And quite frankly, the, the financial situation was better then than it is right now. So to try and change the budget in the 11th hour with, without the proper discussion and look at the financial implications of it is, is not something I'm, I'm willing to do. So I'm, I'm not in support of that motion.
Councilman Rukowski?
Thank you. I would like to say that I feel like I'm a little taken aback, but I'm not. I know Councilman Hersberg has been advocating to add to the staffing levels. Last year, when the question came up, I had asked as well and that number came in at 11. So I feel that right now, adding one to our budget, regardless of the implication, regardless if there is a grant in the works, if this allows the executive of that department, and in this case, it's the chief of police, to add a body that is needed, then we need to give him the ability to do that. But I have reservations. The reservations that I have is that at times, what would be worse than hiring somebody? And to me, that's laying them off. And so the money does have to come from somewhere. We had strategic planning sessions, but we've come to a point where we're supposed to be passing the fiscal year budget and we haven't explored public safety. We haven't looked at what we need in our police department and what we need in our fire department. We've looked at apparatus. We've looked at what the fleet should look like for both of those bodies. But we haven't done a long-term vision of what those departments are going to look like a year, two years, five years, 10 years down the road. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm a little lost for words. And, but ultimately, I can support that if that's giving our chief the latitude that he needs to operate his department correctly.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Roll call. Oh, you just popped it in at the last second. There you go. Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, you know, I just want to say I respect everybody's opinion on council. Um, it is something I've asked for every year in the budget, and I don't see a reason why, why we can't get, get one. Um, as far as visiting sessions go, we know we need to hire more. Uh, we're not gonna do a study that's gonna come back and tells us to lay off cops. We already know that. Um, as far as this whole, you know, doing it at the last minute, um, I've been on council for about six years, and even before that, I've seen the budget amended at the meeting. Uh, it's, it's happened. So, I'm fine with just taking the vote. I respect everybody's opinion. I, I tried to get what I wanted to see in the budget, and that's that, so.
Proton Londo?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Um, we've had lengthy discussions on this via budget sessions, um, and we talk offline. Uh, I just find it interesting that the council member didn't reach out to me directly to see if he can get my support. He just ambushes us at the council meeting, just throws it on the table without having given me a chance to research anything or anything like that. So, I support our public safety department. I support our chief, uh, but I won't be in support of this particular item. I'd like to see what's going on with our, or hear about our grant program, or grant, um, grant proposal, and also want to go through the strategic planning session. We can always make a budget amendment down the road, uh, when we see where we're at with American Rescue Funds as well. So, I will not be in support of this motion, but I want to say for the record that I am supportive of our police department.
Is there any other discussion? All right, reminder, this motion is for the amendment. Roll call.
To amend the police officer full-time equivalent from 48 to 49 for the proposed 2021, 2022 budget. Councilman Godbout?
No.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Proton Londo?
No.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we move to, back to the original motion, which now the budget is amended as the prior motion. Is there any discussion on the amended budget? Any discussion? Mayor?
Just some clarification. I think we need to let Steve Smith talk, because basically what we have just done is now council will potentially be passing a budget that's in deficit spending, which is not a balanced budget, which we're required to do by the state. That goes back to our discussion why we probably should, if this was the intent of council, we probably should've took a look at that. But Steve could probably verbalize that a little bit more eloquent than I just did.
Council President, can I go first, please?
Yeah.
So, the budget called for adding 80,000, about 80,000, uh, to the surplus, so obviously that's not gonna happen. And then if the finance director could comment, we didn't spend $30,000 on an item that was proposed. I don't know where those funds were proposed to come out of. It was in this year's budget, not next year's. But I, but I believe that we will be able to, if we have to amend it, uh, the money's there. I, I don't see us, uh, we didn't mess anything up here. We did the right thing.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, through the chair. So, the way the budget resolution everyone has in front of them would need to be changed. So, uh, an average starting salary and with fringe benefits for police officers, about 125,000. Dan and I had figured that out before. Um, so what you'd have to do is increase the police department's budget by 125,000. The addition to fund balance would disappear, and you would use, you'd have to use 45,000 of fund balance, i- as the mayor said, to keep a balanced budget. So, those two changes would have to be made as far as the budget resolution that everyone has in front of you. And then, obviously, in the, in the police department, numbers would go up from 48 to 49 as well. So, those changes would have to be made.
So, Mr. Smith, in, in clarification, another motion would have to be to, uh, to re- to draw off of fund balance for $45,000?
That's correct. Yeah. Yep. Instead of you, you're adding to fund balance of, of the 80,000. Um, you know, and basically all the line items in the police department budget, and, and we estimated it at 125,000. So, like, the salary line item would have to change, the fringe benefits, the healthcare, and all those added up together would have to come up to 125,000. So...
I think Mr. Clerk is, hold on, hold on. Mr. Clerk is offering us a solution through a friendly amendment. Mr. Clerk, can you help us if we get the friendly amendment through the maker and supporter?
Yes. Based upon, excuse me, what the finance director, Mr. Smith stated, if the maker, maker and the seconder would wish to friendly amend their proposal, their motion, their support, to increase the police department FTE for police officer from 48 to 49, to incre- increase the police department overall expenditure by 125,000, and to use $45,000 of the fund balance, that would allow us to proceed.
Maker and supporter, are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
It's actually-
Were you the supporter?
It's actually, uh, Councilman McDermott, seconded by Proton Londo.
No.
No.
The proposed budget. We're on the, we're on the budget.
Proposed budget. Okay. I was going to the amendment.
No, we're on the budget.
Thank you very much. A little bit of parley pro craziness today, folks, so thank you. Are the maker and supporters okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Through the chair to the finance department, um, do you believe those facts, those figures to be as accurate as possible? I mean, changing the entire budget by just adding two line items to an amendment, um, we could be looking at another, um, just a miscalculation or something to that effect. So, do you feel that those are, um, figures that will allow us to move the budget?
Through the chair, the 125,000 you're referring to?
Yes, and then the additional removal from fund balance of 45,000.
Yeah. I, I mean, obviously, that's council's decision to do that, and it would affect the years going forward as well. So, right now, we're just talking about the first year because that's what, uh, the resolution is in front of council. So, it will have other effects on the years going forward, but we wouldn't know those until we plug them in. But council's not voting on the other years today, so.
Sure. Um, then I'm going to state my unreadiness with passing the budget without seeing the, um, total effect.
Chief?
Thank you. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Through the chair. I would like to just add something that maybe I can help out a little bit here, at least a perspective. Currently, we're in a position to where, um, I've only got 79 officers, and we have an expired list. I sent you guys an email today that we're going to be hiring, um, two more officers, not until July, which is going to exhaust our list. From that point in time, it's going to take me at least 90 days to do a hiring process, to hire a new person anyways. Um, I just want to suggest that there's not, even if we pass this today, I'm not going to be able to hire anybody right away until we get through that process. I would be comfortable with the, the grant opportunity path that we were originally going down, but I do want to share that. I know that you guys are doing a lot of work right now, trying to figure out how we're gonna get that money, where reality is, I probably wouldn't be able to hire that position right away anyways. So, I just wanted to share that with council.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. As, as we've seen, uh, obviously, there's more to trying to amend a budget in the 11th hour than, uh, is, quite frankly, uh, fiscally responsible for us to vote on. You know, this, uh, this last-minute change, and to my recollection, I don't ever remember a budget being changed at the, the meeting that the budget is being voted on. People can either vote it up or vote it down, but there, in the, the over 20 years I've been on council, and, uh, our clerk before me, I, I don't remember that even when he was on the council, uh, that a budget was ever amended in this fashion. Uh, as you've seen already, that it's gonna take a while. There's no reason that, once we have the proper information, the proper numbers, uh, that the budget cannot be, that budget can be amended, and in fact, if we did get a, a grant or anything else, we would have to amend the budget at that point in time. To, so I would like to make a motion to reconsider at this point the, uh, the amendment to the, the base. Uh... Has to be a member of the prevailing side. Obviously, there's, uh, Robert's Rules that say I can't request a reconsideration
Has to be a member-
Because I wasn't on the prevailing side, so...
Correct.
But, uh, quite frankly, I won't approve a budget, I won't know on the budget without having all the numbers, not knowing where the allocations are coming from. Uh, you know, we've got a responsibility to be fiscally responsible, and to make these kind of changes and to amend a bud- a budget on the fly like that, uh, I won't be in support of.
Who was next? Councilman Londo?
No.
No? Councilman Hersberg?
Uh, I just want to thank the chief for jumping in. I think what he was trying to say is that the money's not exactly gonna be all spent. So, if it's $125,000 for the whole year, he doesn't start for 90 days, plus the time to get it going. You know, it's not gonna, for the first year at least, it's not gonna be that total amount. So, thanks.
Is there any discussion? Amendment. Councilman Green?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to speak to the comment. Um, there was a statement by Councilman Godbout of, of, uh, something being fiscally irresponsible. Um, the city came up with $175,000 to buy brand-new computers, citywide computers and laptops. That money wasn't in the budget. They also, as soon as we approved the last budget, we got requests for all types of capital items, brand-new roofs, uh, all types of stuff that was not in the budget. When I asked, why were none of these items included in the budget? Oh, we forgot. But they, they sent it to city council after, and that's been the case every time we've approved a budget, and it will more than likely happen this time as well. Um, uh, the, there were employment positions created that were not budgeted for in the, for the mayor's administration. They found money to, to create new jobs, new benefits packages for people to join his administration, one who got a $40,000 salary raise last year. The, um, the, uh, contracts that I mentioned, the, the 4% and 5% locked increases, not one city employee is entitled to that type of annual increase, um, in salary, not even police and fire, but we find 4% to 5% in these long-term contract agreements that we give. The police chief himself, uh, retired during this current budget year. He was allowed to go into retirement after 25 years with the City of Westland. Um, he is now banking a six-figure salary retirement, and then he was rehired on a Monday morning as our brand-new police chief, and he's getting a six-figure employment salary plus benefits. So, when we, and, and, and it was stated that this, uh, uh, deal that was specially made, and no other city employee who had 25 years or more and eligible for retirement, was extended that offer. None of them wa- uh, would, would even qualify, which that deal actually set a precedent in the city. Uh, but I digress. Um, there's, there's no questions when we make these type of exceptions, um, that, that, um, offer that was made for Chief Jadrusik, the mayor claimed that it was gonna save the city almost $250,000, a quarter of a million dollars. When we got to the budget, uh, study sessions and the, uh, council meeting, it all fell apart, uh, and it was not true. It was not a true statement. So, when you, um, and I, and I appreciate what the chief is saying in terms of staffing, but that does not speak for the entire, uh, uh, men and women, the 79 officers who are out there serving. And I'm speaking as an officer myself, and we have sat here for, I have sat here for the last four years, and we have never added to the police department. We have, um, and, and you, to, to pass it off on a, um, and, and, and also, it is not difficult, if you have any background in budgeting, it is not difficult to, to move money around and, and, and close an effective budget. What is going to happen is some of the fat is going to be cut out from these expenses that have been put forward, and we are going to reallocate them to law enforcement. It is not an extent, anybody who has a budgeting background knows that you can, um, reallocate funding and close a balanced budget relatively easy, and I'm confident that with an administration and a, a, uh, finance director who's been here for more than 20 years, that the city could easily do that. And I'm, I, I would volunteer to help them find the money from a different category if, if need be. And so I, I, I am not in agreement with passing the buck and waiting on a grant, and, and the facade about this is a very difficult process. It, it, it absolutely is not. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Godbout?
Yes. The, uh, the resolution that we pass has specific dollar amounts for all the various departments, as well as the general fund. So, before I can vote on anything, I need to know what those exact numbers are in a resolution that I can vote on, either yes or no, because, uh, saying it's, well, it's approximately 125,000 that's gonna go into police, uh, and now we're hearing, well, it may not be 125,000. Uh, so, I would, I would like to see the, where the numbers are in the, uh, in the budget, because the numbers that we vote on are, it is part of the resolution.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
On the amended proposed budget, Councilman Godbout?
No.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
No.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item seven. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Spreading Millage for Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2021 and Ending June 30, 2022.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Nope. Councilman Godbout?
Uh, this resolution also includes line-by-line numbers in it that need to be revised before we can pass the, uh, the resolution for spreading the, the budget, the, the allocations.
Steve, can you address that?
Through the chair, uh, Councilman Godbout's correct. The, the figures all relate to the, uh, budget as was proposed, so some of those numbers would change. I mean, so, you know, when Councilman Godbout said about 125,000, you know, we figured out the, the starting salary of a, a new police officer. It would be 125,000 with the fringe benefits, so that would be the number if, uh, if that's... Yeah, but it does change all the numbers. But, you know...
So, I guess the question is, what's the procedural issue here? Do we just vote on it? Mr. Fosson, do you have anything to offer?
I think it's clear that the finance director is telling you that the motion is currently before you would be inaccurate, and that you should maybe seek a friendly amendment to adjust the, uh, present motion, to take into account the numbers which he's, uh, discussed.
Friendly amendment, again, for Councilwoman Rukowski and Councilman Hersberg? Right? Per what the attorney said? Are you in acceptance of that?
I accept it.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yeah, just to clarify, it's adding 125,000 to the police department budget in use of 45,000 of the fund balance.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Green? Councilwoman Green? Did you have your light on or no?
No.
Okay. Councilman Godbout, did you have your light on again?
Yes, I did.
It's like a Christmas tree, so I'm trying to manage it.
No problem. I can see in here where we're adding, or propose to add, $125,000 to the police, but where this resolution does not stipulate the general fund balance that that money comes out of. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. Where in the, in the numbers is that coming from?
So through the chair, you have to add a line item called "use of fund balance" for 45,000. And then with the addition of the police department expenditures, because we were adding 80,000 to fund balance, so that's going to go away, and now you're going to use 45,000 of fund balance. That would be on the revenue side. So then your revenues will equal your expenditures at that point.
Councilwoman Rukowski? Councilman Hersberg? You support that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout?
No.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
No.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
President Hert?
Yes.
Motion passes with the amendment. New business, item eight. Adoption of Capital Improvement Program as outlined in the 2021 through 2022 budget.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any support? I'll pass the gavel to Council, Pro Tem Londo, and I'll support. It's your floor.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, support.
Or by President Hert? Is there any discussion? I don't, I can't see the screens. You guys are going to have to just raise your hand. Any discussion from the maker, supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any dissent? Councilman Godbout?
Again, I believe the. Again, this document contains figures allocated across all the various departments, and would need to be amended on the fly again to accommodate this request.
Thank you, Councilman Godbout. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? We'll have to do a friendly amendment again. We'll just need to know what exactly the figures are. Mr. Smith, can you help us out? Or?
What's that? So through the chair, the CIP budget, I do not believe changes at all. That money's in a separate fund, and it's not affected by the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Godb-
Yeah, just a question. The item under item eight includes all of the various appropriations in there, I believe. Or are we just referring to the line item in, at the bottom that says, "Capital Improvement Plan is amended by council for 2122"?
Yeah, that's all it's including. Yes, sir.
But again, the rest of that resolution quotes specific dollar amounts for specific departments. So I believe that that needs to be amended as well to reflect those changes as part of this resolution.
Through the chair, you know, without, obviously, doing a little research, but I don't believe it requires it, but if council wants to pass the amendment, in case it does, but the CIP is a separate resolution, and it only talks about the capital improvement money in it.
No, it doesn't. The resolution.
It's part of the resolution, yes.
Councilman Godbout?
It's part of the resolution, but that resolution details out all of the other items that are in the budget.
President Hert?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's the preamble to the resolution. The resolution starts off at "whereas," would it not? Or does that entire document considered part of the actual resolution being a preamble? I mean, it kind of does. Council resolution says "resolved," at the budget expenditures, and it shows through. So that being said, I would agree that the same friendly amendments are going to have to be made on this document as well for the underlying motion, so that it would be able to be mathematically correct with the two preceding motions. As a supporter, I accept that.
Does Maker accept that?
Yes.
Does the clerk have the motion? And can he read it if so? No, I can't read it. But I'll be working with the finance director tomorrow as I prepare the minutes. It will be a similar amendment to those two previously passed. It's the best I can offer. Fair enough. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Roll call, please. Councilman Godbout?
No.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
No.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
President Hert?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll pass the gavel back to President Hert. New business, item nine. Adoption of Administrative Fee Schedule for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg?
Support, Green.
Support by Councilwoman Green. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 10. Approval of voucher.
Motion from Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into public comment. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotted time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right?
Good evening again. Emily Baumann. First, I, that was hard for you guys, and I can only imagine, having been someone who's worked with companies and get their budgets together and work on that. And so I want to say I do appreciate the increase to the police officers, and I think you guys, from a citizen's perspective, I think you guys did the right thing, even though I know it's not exactly what you guys wanted to do, and all had to go through this, and I really do hope that everything gets worked out for that. But I think it's encouraging, and I did hear, I actually was writing some things down, and I had heard previously someone make comment that there is a concern with the people coming in, and if they don't have any kind of, like, if someone might not, may might not choose to be a police officer if they don't think that they can actually get a job. And so you've got all that time of applying and then training and all that kind of stuff, so you really won't be bringing somebody on. And I'd heard that it might be five, six months before someone's actually on the force. So again, I support what you did, and I'm really glad, as hard as it was for you guys, and I felt for you. I think you guys did the right thing, so I want to thank you. The other thing I just wanted to make reference to is a couple other, June 2021 has also been designated as two other things, and I just want you guys to consider something, is one of them is PTSD Awareness Month. It is the National PTSD Awareness Month, and it is very concerning, because when we talk about veterans, or we talk about even people, even rape victims or children, this is a huge problem, and suicides and everything are happening from this. So June 2021 is the National PTSD Awareness Month, trying to encourage, it's intended to raise public awareness about issues related to PTSD, reduce the stigma associated with PTSD, which is a mental illness, and help ensure that those suffering from the invisible wounds of war or other things receive proper treatment. And so I really want to encourage the thought of maybe there might be some other ones. I do know that nationally, there has been also a Christianity Month as well. Christian Month is June 2021, has been encouraged, because there's a number of events when we're talking about diversity and being inclusive for all of our community members. There are a lot of dates in June that have caused this to also be, June 2021, to be Christianity Month. And so as you guys consider proclamations and things like that, I think it is important to look at some of these other opportunities to also include people in your community who are suffering from illnesses like this, like PTSD. And it's a hidden illness, and I can tell you, you can look at someone, you can talk to them, and you don't even know that in their head, they are saying, "I can't take this anymore." And PTSD really goes through, and it gets triggered, you don't even know how. And then additionally, obviously, the Christianity Month. So if you can consider those, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Sir?
Well, thank you, council, for hearing the residents. I'm a hard-working resident of Westland. Earlier, Ms. Tasha, how you doing? I noticed you acknowledged Matthew Chapter 7 and Verse 1. But we got to keep the Bible in context. I've been a preacher for many years now. I too used to be unskillful on the word of righteousness. So we got to look in context what that finishes out in Verse 5. It's actually talking about hypocrites judging hypocritically. Every one of us judge, every day. I don't care how you look at it, we judge all the time. We got to judge by God's standard, not by ours. I don't use my own judgment. I had to get judged by this standard first before I could start preaching. That way, I could deliver an accurate judgment according to how God judges, because our souls are definitely on the line here. If we condone acknowledging things that's abominable to God, it's going to cause personal issues between you and God. I don't care if you're Christian, or you're not a Christian, you're an atheist, we're all going to pass away, and we all got to face something one day. We all got to face a holy God, and he calls us to be holy as he is holy. Bible says that "God has not called us unto uncleanness but to holiness." Most churches don't preach that. Most churches don't preach repentance and fear of the Lord, because they don't want to run out their congregation. But the facts are, the Bible, we are supposed to read it through and through, the whole counsel of God. We are to take heed to the entire counsel of God. And I just encourage the council today to get biblically principled, because our nation is under attack. The Bible says, "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against spiritual wickedness in high places of the dark rulers of this world." Sometimes you don't understand what type of attack's coming against you, because it's a principle. And we can't defend ourselves without being biblically principled. And you guys are ordained by God to have your job, and I expect even the highest authority here, which would be, I guess, the mayor, to be biblically principled. I don't know if you guys swear an oath to this Bible. I think some of you may have to get in your area. But I would encourage you to get biblically principled and get a personal relationship with Jesus Christ, because we can all go to church and be under a pasture for 10, 20 years, and still be unskillful on the word of righteousness, unbiblically principled, and just taking heed to the pasture. And that's not how we get saved, and that's not how others get saved. So we got to be really careful what we're condoning. I know it's really difficult. I have homosexual friends. I'm not saying I don't have those type of friends. But what I am saying is, we got to be careful what we condone. I minister to all my friends. And yes, if a camera followed me around.
Your time's up, sir.
It might find a mistake, but very few.
That's your three minutes. That's your three minutes. Thank you. Anyone in the back? Yes, right here. Yep, come on up. I see you.
Hello?
Hello.
Good conversation going on with everybody. I really appreciate you, what you do, you too, and I really love your passion. And I'm very passionate, too. And one thing that I want to bring to your attention, too, with your passion, you are judging all these people who took money away from the people with races in the wrong time. You're judging them. But you know what? God tells us to judge. Remember what you read? You were very good reading that Bible verse. Don't judge, that you'll be judged in the same measure. And do you know why it's proper for you to judge? Because I know you're not going to take money from the people, so you can judge them. Read a little more. You'll find that. Thank you.
Hi. Anyone on my right? Sir?
Okay. I want to tell everybody, Happy Pride Month. I do support, I do support this. It is a really big need within our city and our disability community. As advocate, I have done multiple things with county and state on LGBT issues with people with disabilities. Will you not judge sex offenders in our city? Will you not judge them? So how do we come across a community of pain and hurt, and we have registered child mothers in our city? Those people should be preached to. Second issue, everybody knows, I'm a really passionate disability advocate, and I've done that in many, many, many things. I worked with him as, when he was the state rep, with Wayne Merrick. Disability is a thing. It's a thing what everybody has worked through. Diversity has to work together. Leadership has to be together. I'm a vice chair of a statewide organization, and if I don't do something, look, that state body is going to address that. So when I'm constantly reviewing our city policies and saying things, coming up there and reading it, I feel that I'm not being listened to. So I guess, am I not actually saying, I feel, I don't feel I'm being listened to? And maybe that's what I need to say. So I hope by that, more can happen. And then, well, what was it? What was? Yeah. So, oh, yeah. And I know this thing regarding the parking recs director on his comment, disability is just not physical. Disability deals with emotional, deals with feelings, deals with support. So when I'm referring to the event, I meant for staffing to have support, people who sometimes, their mind makes, they get one thought, and they could probably go by a pop or something and get sidetracked. So disability is not just physical. It's really good to have wheelchairs and there, but there are other type abilities, and so advocates, that's what we do. We advocate, or elected officials. We work together. We advocate, and we all work together. So thank you.
All right. Anybody on my left? Sir?
Hi, Brandon Tubbs. In respect to the budgets that had been approved, and items in those budgets approved for the next year or going forward, I'd like to just take the question, just to ask you a question. Who approved Dominion voting machines, again? I was not here, but in retrospect, we see that there are issues, incidents, concerns, area concerns where fraud is being outed with these machines. We spent how much money on those machines without due diligence? I'd like to know who approved those, who researched those, if I may.
Sir? The state of Michigan authorized county clerks to make a decision on behalf of all communities within the county to determine which voting machines would be used in each county. The Wayne County clerk made the decision to select Dominion voting equipment. Cities within Wayne County are obligated to use that equipment. Cities within Wayne County are obligated to use that equipment. Are we also not obligated to question that? If Dominion is violating the Constitution and our voice is being heard and flipping votes from one to the other, I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, or Independent, doesn't matter. We lose our voice. That is not acceptable. And for us to just throw money in, even though it's been allocated, can we really approve It's a question.
I know it's a question. I view it as somewhat rhetorical. The city council, the legislative body approves the budget, as you witnessed this evening. The city of Westland is obligated to use certain equipment and to pay for it. That happened, I believe it was four years ago. And claims regarding Dominion voting equipment, to the extent that has been communicated to our office and others within the state, have been proven unfounded in terms of accuracy...
When you say unfounded, are you also looking at the new evidence? Because there's plenty of new evidence that refutes what's out there, what the mainstream media is saying. That's all I have, and I appreciate everyone here. I just want everyone to think and to really analyze what's been out in the news recent. Thank you. God bless.
All right. Anyone in the back? Sir?
Quite a night. I did want to start off by saying it's nice to be back in person, like it or not. But I did want to say, I can look at you and see, I prayed for you at the loss of your Many of us Republicans, and I'm not speaking on behalf of all Republicans, but I can tell you that we back the blue. So what happened here tonight was awesome. You'll figure it out. You'll find money somewhere that needed to happen. We need to support our police. There are some things that I disagree with Mr. McDermott on, but those will work out in time. Just understand that in an election year, everybody's being watched, and your decisions are being looked at. I want to make a point, because I think what I spoke to you about was taken maybe a little out of context. I'm not against homosexuals, okay? They can choose to ruin their lives however they want. However, it's, and it's not about being inclusive, okay? So I'm with that. But it's about the proclamation celebrating someone's sin. So I do disagree with that. And the propaganda machine of GLAD and some of these other homosexual groups has turned up to 100%. And I bet if you went out and asked anybody on the street, what percentage of the population in America is homosexual, you would get extremely high numbers. But the truth of the fact of the matter is, it's only 4%. Okay? So if there was 100 people in this room, and four people came up here and said, "Y'all got to bow down to our homosexual ways," I don't think that would happen. So it's, you know, talk about the tail wagging the dog, and that's what's happening here. I mean, it's, I'm just really sick of it being shoved down our throats, quite frankly. You know what? I'm a Christian. I'm not going to be waiting at your doorstep to witness to you and tell you about Christ. If you want to hear about it, I'll tell you, but I'm not going to shove it down your throat. This is an extremely slippery slope that we've done. What's next? Pedophilia Month? I propose that June be declared Straight Pride Month, or even Fighting Sex Trafficking. I find it hard to believe that all seven of you agree to this level of sexual depravity. All of you voted in favor of this. I assure you that the voters are watching. These type of actions are detrimental to families. It destroys the family fiber. Keep it up, and no one's going to want to move here. Think about it. They'll go to Livonia, Garden City, Canton, Wayne.
And your time's up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Sir?
I'd like to start by saying the Bible says, "Let God be true in every man a liar." I want to thank the God of my salvation that I can stand before you today and speak. In Matthew 18, Jesus says that it's better for a man if a millstone were tied around his neck than for him to be thrown in the depth of the sea than to offend one of his little ones. He says this as a child is put before him. We're offending our little ones, those in our community, when we bring and lift up sexual immorality. We're not here to speak against homosexuals. We understand that they are just as lost as some of us may have been if the grace of our Lord hadn't brought us out of darkness into his marvelous light, the Bible declares. So we're here to speak against the sexual morality. The Bible says to open your mouth, judge righteously, plead the cause of the poor and needy. That's why you'll see me and my brother here in front of the abortion clinic that's just down on Ford Road, speaking for the littlest ones in our society, the most vulnerable. And it's that same heart that the Lord has given us, not of ourselves, not of our own righteousness, but that of our gods, to stand before you and declare that this is wrong. And we can only do that by the authority of Scripture. The Bible says in Proverbs 23, "To not withhold correction, and by this you will deliver souls from hell." So anyone who wants to call themselves a Christian, we have to follow what our Lord says, and our Lord is Jesus Christ, and he says, "If you love me, you will keep my commandments." So there are many of us here who would like to say, they like to use that title, "I'm a Christian," but we only know that by their fruits. We only know that by those who lift up the name of the Lord. And every Christian will say, "That I will not die, but I shall live and declare the works of the Lord all the days of my life." That is true Christianity, and true Christianity is submitting to the whole counsel of God. Thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone on my left? I, you, I saw you in the back. Mr. Statchow. He beat you. A little quicker.
I wanted to make sure it was live. Thank you. My name's Dan Statchow, resident, taxpaying resident of the city of Westland. And I'd just like to thank everybody on the council, Mayor Wild, police chief, fire chief, everybody that was involved in putting this parade together for the veterans, Bova VFW 885, Mike Wondell for carrying me during commentary. And just wanted to say, it was a short parade. We had a small window to work with to put it together, but it'll be better next year. Thank you very much.
Anyone in the back?
Well, I just want to expound upon a little bit of what I said earlier. First of all, I'm sure some of you have been here for a long time, as long as 20 years, right? You've probably seen plenty of passionate young people coming here with fire, you know? I'm only 24 years old. I'll be 25 this year, right? So it can sound kind of foolish, right? Like, we don't know a lot about the world. And I appreciate even your passion, man, for, you know, making sure that money is sent to the right place, right? I've lived some pretty hard stuff, and I've seen abuses of power, right? So as far as Gay Pride Month and those things, I already said what I wanted to say. Some of the things that I have heard said, I'm not sure if those all said in love, as Christ commanded us to. So I don't agree with all of that. But I love each and every one of you, and, you know, I'm going to pray for each and every one of you, and hope that you make the right decision. So with the time that I have left, I just wanted to say this, you know, something that someone said long before I did. Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are they that mourn, for they shall be comforted. Blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth. Blessed are they which do hunger and thirst after righteousness, for they shall be filled. Blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy. Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Blessed are they which are persecuted for righteousness sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are ye, and men shall revile you and persecute you, and shall say all manner of evil against you falsely for my sake. Rejoice and be exceedingly glad, for great is your reward in heaven. For so persecuted they the prophets which were before you. Thank you for your time, and I hope that God leads you to make the right decision. You know, that would honestly help our community. Thank you, and you guys have a good night now.
Anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, council. So good to see you guys back. I know it's been a very long night. I can tell in your faces. Probably not the most easiest meeting that you've had, but there's been a theme here, and I think it's been judgment. So what I want to say is, I want to thank each and every one of you as elected officials. I may not have agreed with you, but to be in your position is extremely tough, extremely tough. The scrutiny that I've seen, especially recently, pretty much about each and every one of you and candidates running, is sickening. If we're going to move Westland forward, positivity. To go out there, trash candidates, the mayor, whoever it is, is, to me, unacceptable. You have people here in the audience personally that have trashed me. But what I'm going to say this is, I know that you guys have positivity in your hearts, you guys have worked hard, and I personally want to thank, and I know Councilman, or Councilwoman Rukowski's not here, but I'll talk to her later. I want to thank you all again. I don't always agree with everyone, but I know that you guys do things with passion, with your heart, and the type of just dedication that you give from your families, the time that you put in, people have no idea. So again, I want to thank you, and I appreciate you, and I hope that people out in social media land will do the same. Because, again, I've seen a lot of negativity. It's very sad that this city decides to bash instead of lift up. And that's all I'd like to say, and thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone out? Yeah.
Michael Delph here, resident of over 20 years. Wow, it's good to be back. Peter, Councilman Peter Huisberg, Councilwoman Tasha Green, thank you for standing up there and bringing our police force back up. I know, Peter, you've been doing this for a few years, and it just hasn't been happening. And I thank you. The safety is number one for the residents, but it's also safety for our officers. More officers, it's easier on them. And it's been a long time for this. Secondly, Blues Festival, great event. I want to echo what some of the other fellowmen, they all said, was the handicap. We need more friendly handicap assessment. I was there a few years ago when we had it, and we had my mother-in-law with me, who has MS, and we did have an issue getting around. And third, Battle of the Badges. I want to put a challenge at the DPW department, if you're brave enough. I think that would be a great addition to it, and I guarantee you, the DPW will give you a run for your money. And that'll be it for tonight. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. All right. So now I'm just going to open up general, because I think we're getting down. So anybody else in the audience? Ray?
Well, I'll tell you something. It's good to be back in person. Zooming, I've been watching YouTube, YouTube. I mean, you don't think I'm on there, but I see everything that's been happening. It's been like, you know, we are supposed to be a compassionate city. But I love to see the compassion, and say, you know, everyone has their own, I keep saying, opinions about things, which is fine. But where is the, our ESTP underneath the rug? We got to respect one another, and I don't see it. I wanted to say to Jeff, thank you for your police department there. The guys and women are doing a great job, and I'm happy to hear about the budget tonight, adding more police officers. Thanks, Green, for talking about that. And also talked about the judge. You know, we have all been judged. I've been judged, even with people with disabilities. So I know what it feels like, and I know what, you know, it's just like, sometimes the only one who's going to judge us, at the bottom of the line is God. I have my own belief, and nobody, nobody in this room is going to change my belief. I believe what I believe in. I'm a people person. Every right has a right, and everyone has their choices. And people with disabilities will keep, continue living a life and being treated with dignity and respect. So that's all what pretty much I have to say tonight, is y'all have a good night. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Candy Halton, and I wanted to address the podium to actually say thank you to the council for actually being able to add an additional officer onto the budget. Collectively, I think you all agreed on that, and it was a really great job. I also wanted to come to the podium and say, as being a wife of a veteran, to also piggyback right off another citizen agreeing that June should be PTSD month. I kind of agree with that as well. Maybe we can kind of share that month with some other, it's a lot of different things we can celebrate in June, but that one really stands really firm in my heart about. The other thing I wanted to actually acknowledge is the passion that Tasha Green actually has on this podium. We need that. We don't need to actually do away with that. We need passionate city council members on this board who are willing to stand up for the citizens of Westland. So Tasha Green, I thank you for that. My name is Candy Halton, and I thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the audience? Sir?
President Hurt, I would just like to first, under the ADA, I would like to ask for accommodation. I may need more than three minutes because of my disability to speak.
I don't hit the start until you get to the podium.
Would you grant me accommodation to have more time to speak?
No, it's three minutes, right? No, that's under our policy. It's a policy, three minutes. That's what you have.
Sir, do you understand the ADA?
Sir, you have three minutes, sir.
You have to, a person? You should probably ask your attorney.
If you do not require, under the law, to grant the accommodation, you may ask for these rule limits. I would recommend you proceed on the time available.
I would, Attorney Fonson, I would ask you respectfully, go look at it again, because Okay, so you refuse a reasonable accommodation for ADA?
You have three minutes, sir. And just being honest, you're down to 2:10.
So you're refusing the ADA accommodation that's reasonable?
I'm refusing to allow you more than three minutes to speak. That is correct.
Are you allowing me more than three minutes?
I'm allowing you three minutes, which you've already used over one of.
Okay. So you're denying a reasonable accommodation.
Sir, I'm allowing you what's in the policies and procedures of three minutes.
Under the ADA...
Sir, do you want to go back? And we can just do this for the rest of the time, if that's what you want to do. I'm going to allow you the three minutes. You're down to one minute and 40.
So, under the ADA, I hope the mayor can start addressing some of this, because under the ADA, it says you have to adjust your procedures and policies for people with disabilities. So if you want to open the ADA lawsuit, you're headed that way. And I hope, Mr. Fonson, you start studying the law on ADA. And I hope, Mr. Fonson, you start studying the law on ADA. So I emailed Mr. Steve Smith, our financial director, four times. No voicemail, no email reply. Is that acceptable, Mayor Wild? I think not. The blue bins that has the Westland city emblem. There's trash dumped outside of them all the time. Makes the city look bad. We have a council member that's part of that company. Really doesn't help the city out. It's a eyesore. But I do want to thank Craig Brown. We have some ADA things that were on the website. He was kind enough to talk with me and make some changes, so I want to thank him. I want to thank the police chief. We had some ADA concerns, his team, his staff. They came out. They responded to my emails right away.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Is there anyone else in the audience? Was it? Oh, yep.
Hi, my name is Josh Powell. I just wanted to come up and say, it sounds like there's a lot of passions on every side this evening about a lot of things. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and everybody's been fairly respectful, I think. I also wanted to say a special, I guess I haven't used the word politicking all that much, but I think Councilman Hirsberg definitely did that this evening very well. But I just wanted to say, I know every budget that every city ever has always seems like it increases every year, but never stays the same or decreases. And I think that that would be somewhere to start, so we can possibly lower some of the tax burden from some of the citizens, especially in the Long Ford Road area. I think anybody that drives along Ford Road can see the stark differences between Canton and Westland when you cross over the overpass there. And I hope that that's taken into consideration in the future. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Just a reminder, if you can't see me, I can't see you, so if the little border's in the way, do lean. Anybody else in the audience? All right, I'm going to close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President, and good evening once again, everyone. Counsel, thank you for coming in a little bit early tonight for the study session for the proposed development of the LOE site. I know it's something that we've been talking about for a long time. And it's nice to see that that project looks like it's going to move forward, so I appreciate you guys coming in for that. Counsel, I support your resolution for recognizing Pride Month this month. And I want to just tell the residents why. Westland has, we've made it one of our core values, is the diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's going to be one of the community's core values, and the city council passed a resolution. We created a commission, and we are going to work on building community wealth. And I think part of that has to be a welcoming city. And Westland is a welcoming city. We're a compassionate city. And with that, I think that the Pride Month falls under the inclusion part of our D E I principles. Not everybody will agree with it, but not everybody agreed with the resolutions that we passed that put those values in place. Dan Statch, I'll thank you, and Vic Barra, and everybody from the Bova and all of our veterans that went into putting our Memorial Day parade together. And Councilman Londo, I did have a chance to see it on TV, and I think Dan carried you most of the time, but I thought you did a nice job too, so you guys made a really great one-two there. So, but that day was really nice, because that was kind of the first day that the communities really came out and got back together post-COVID. And my comments that day, I said today, I think, was our first day where it started to feel like normalcy was returned to the community. So thanks, everybody that went into that. I know those events are hard to pull together, and the weather cooperated. Speaking of community events, we're going to have Outdoor Movie Night on June 23rd at Central City Park, Tatten Park. It's going to be a free family event. It starts at 5:00 PM. There'll be free hot dogs, popcorn, and drinks. And we'll have a lot of information out there that night on our community initiatives. The movie is going to be Onward, which will begin at 7:00 PM. Once again, this is the time of year that I kick off my summer jobs program, Wild About Youth Works. And we currently, on the city's website, we have a whole litany of Westland businesses that are looking for young adults to enter the workforce over the summer. So if you have youth in your household that's between the ages of 15 and 19, and you'd like them to learn some work ethic and some financial literacy and some life lessons that are going to last a lifetime, we encourage them to take a look at the Wild About Youth section on the website. And this year, we probably have more jobs than we've ever had before, and the diversity of the jobs is great. And right now, a lot of businesses are paying a lot of money for youth right now. So definitely get them into that if it's something they'd like to do. Counsel, we did receive word today that the county is going to be scheduling Household Hazardous Waste Day here in the city of Westland. It's going to be on July 10th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It'll be back in the J.C. Penney's parking lot. So we'll have more information, but I wanted to kind of let everybody know, because I know a lot of people during COVID have been holding on to a lot of this stuff, and they've got it in their garage in their basement. So July 10th will be the date, and we'll be back with more information about that. Counsel, we're still, I know that Chief Morris has been doing a great job communicating our Vaccinate Westland program to counsel each Friday. The fire department's just been doing an outstanding job on this program. And our partnership that we created with Kroger has just been, it's just been, it's been a godsend for our community. We're continuing to do those vaccination events, but we have to be honest, is that the lines are getting smaller and smaller each week. I know that the president has come out with the goal of getting the nation up to 70% vaccinated by the end of June, by 4th of July weekend. It looks like Michigan's numbers are probably somewhere around 59%, which I'm assuming Westland's numbers are probably pretty consistent with that. So you're going to see a big push from myself and other mayors across the nation really pushing our residents to get vaccinated before the end of the month. We're going to hope that we can keep this partnership with Kroger's as long as we can. So, Counsel, if you'd like to participate with that, I can share some of my information on that with you. Counsel, there was a notice that came through, and I want to say this on TV tonight, so that these residents, in case they don't hear it any other way. On Thursday this week, June 10th, from 9:30 AM to 1:30 PM, DTE is going to be turning off electricity on Woodcrest Drive to approximately 60 residents. So I know DTE is reaching out to them, and we'll be working through our social media. But for those residents that live there, their power is going to be out from 9:30 to 1:30 this Thursday, as DTE is doing some repairs there, and it only affects the residents that live on Woodcrest. Then the last thing, Counsel, is I'm not sure if you saw this or not. If you're a Tiger fan, and I know we've had a pretty serious meeting tonight, so I'll end on something a little levity. How cool was it to see a kid from Westland make the Tigers and hit a couple home runs on Saturday? Wasn't that pretty neat? So I remember when the Tigers picked up Eric Haas from the Indians. I think they assigned him to the minor league camp at that time. Wasn't sure if he was going to make the big leagues, but he came in and I think he hit a homerun his first night, then hit two homers the next day. So how about that for Westland resident Eric Haas? Thank you.
Anything from the city attorney today?
I just want to thank counsel that came in today between 5:00 and 6:00 to meet with attorneys Andrea Price and Michael McNamara to get updated on things. So again, somebody mentioned earlier, they don't know, you know, the public may not know all the work you do behind the scenes. So there's another example of work done behind the scenes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Begin council comments tonight with Councilman Hirsberg.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments tonight. It's been quite a long meeting. First, I'll thank all of my colleagues for support on hiring a police officer and supporting the budget. I think it's safe to say that we all supported it, no matter what. The difference of opinion was how and when. So I think we're going to get it worked out, and that's that. Just a couple of comments. Last council meeting, through the chair to the administration, I asked about for an update on the trash system, on our trash cans. I've been getting some complaints from residents who have had a broken trash can and had to wait some two to three weeks to have it replaced. And also that when they are getting cans, they're yellow now, so I was wondering what the issue is with that. Are we getting the black cans back? I didn't see an email. So I was hoping to get an update tonight. I see our DPS director isn't here, so I just, I hope to see an email maybe later this week. I don't need you to, unless you have anything to add.
Through the chair to Councilman, there was a period of time when the city was out of the black containers, so they were using the yellow containers from Priority, kind of as a loan. But those black containers are in stock now. Most of those have been switched out. I know that the waiting list has been caught up. So if you have any resident that calls and says they don't have a can, just tell them to call the mayor's office. I'll take care of it personally.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I actually reached out to the company myself and was able to get one. And one resident told me that she sent in emails. She called the DPS number with no response. I told her to use the Click and Fix app, and she got a can the next day without me, without any intervention. So I think there might be some sort of breakdown of communication between all these methods we have for requesting the cans. I think we should just be pushing one of them, and I appreciate that. Also, I want to thank the administration. I had some concerns about the old golf course, and he had brought forward an item tonight. Unfortunately, it didn't make it to our agenda. It was removed. I think there was enough support against it, due to the cost and a few other things. We do need to do something over there, and I'll, we're definitely going to be talking about that in the future. I'm talking about Hawthorne Valley at Warren and Merriman, and I would like to see that property sold, you know, as soon as possible. It's a huge liability. We keep having fires over there. I've asked the police department to do patrols, and, you know, it just continues to be a problem. The item on our agenda was for a fence. It was a rental fence, which is one of the issues I had with it. If somebody's already damaging the building, they're going to damage a rental fence that we're going to put out there. So I think we were all on the same page about that. That's about it. You know, not to bring up politics at all. You know, I don't want to see politics come into these meetings, you know, if they don't have to. But we do have a sign ordinance. I did get quite a few questions about the size of political signs or the placement. There's a couple of signs on city property. You know, I get that the ordinance might not be enforceable due to private property rights, but we all voted for it and agreed to follow it. It should be followed. And if it's not going to be followed, then I think we should have it removed from the books, so that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the people who came out to the meeting tonight and welcomed us back. It's really nice to be back in person. Thank you for sharing your perspectives, and that's one of the great things that makes us all individuals. We all have different beliefs, different values, but that doesn't mean, at the end of the day, that we cannot get along and appreciate each other for just being ourselves. So thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. The young man who spoke at the podium, the 24-year-old, I'm so proud of you. I don't know your name, but I want to talk to you after the meeting. I am very proud of you, and I would like to see you do more in our city. I think you could be a really great influence on our young people. You coming to the podium tonight, you know, is a great example of the difference that young people can make just by sharing their opinion. And, you know, I would love to see more of that in our city with our youth. So I would love to see you get more involved. I think you would be a, you could make a really big difference of helping our youth kind of knock off the fear and anxiety, and come on in the room and speak up and stand up, because it's your time. So thank you for coming tonight. I'd also like to thank my fellow council members for voting to add additional manpower to the police department. It matters. But one, when you put a number, a cost on an officer, that may be the officer to save another officer's life. So it matters, and I appreciate it. It is long overdue in the city of Westland. And I really look forward to the grant work that's going to happen soon, and hopefully we'll have even more officers. That's it for me tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Gabbout?
Thanks. I'd like to start off, there's been a lot of discussion tonight on the LGBTQ proclamation that was passed this evening. And this is about equity and inclusion. This is not about our religious beliefs. This is about the right for everyone to live, work, and play in a place they call home, that are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. So we've got ordinances in place already that protect rights of our LGBTQ community. This proclamation reinforces that. In here, you know, if you actually read the proclamation, it talks about everybody being treated equally. And so I am a Christian. Matter of fact, the faith that I belong to, the denomination I belong to, has a lesbian as our bishop for the Diocese of Michigan. So.
Hey, sir. No being disruptive here. That's your one and only warning? Sir, you're the next one. There's no outward, there's no disruptions here. Sir, last warning, otherwise there's going to be some removals. Oh, that would be helpful. Thank you. Chief?
Again, I will say that this was not about a religious opinion or status. This was about equality for all. And it's about being able to love your neighbor regardless of who they are or what they believe. There's, so I'll move on to supporting the police. And the chief knows this, and I think every officer in the department knows it. I support the police as much as anyone up here. But there, you know, we had these discussions during the budget session, and there wasn't support at the budget session. Suddenly, we come to a council meeting, and because it gets brought up and it's a hot topic discussion, there's now support for it. But what the budget and the document, and the reason I voted no on the budget, is the numbers in the resolution that we just approved are not accurate. So we passed a budget currently that has inaccurate numbers in there, and the resolution does not reflect those changes. That's what our responsibility is. As the one single thing that we do as council that is probably the most important, and I take most seriously, is our budget process. And there are a lot of things in this budget that I didn't agree with. And there was no secret during the study session what they were. But the majority of the council during those sessions agreed to them. So I didn't bring them up here tonight as. So I didn't bring them up here tonight as part of that discussion, but I would challenge any one, any one of my colleagues or even the administration right now to tell us what our general fund balance is in the new budget as of right now. Because the numbers aren't accurate in the resolutions that we passed. It's, it's just fiscally irresponsible. Yes, and I've supported adding a police officer years, for years I've supported that. There's no question. Councilman Hersberg can attest to that. We were the only two during a couple of budget sessions that were pushing for addition of a police officer. But at this forum is not the place when the numbers that we have to vote on are not accurate. This could have come up as a budget amendment next month, could have come up at the next meeting as a budget amendment. So that we would have the proper numbers and know what our budget is. But right now, it's, it's an estimate. And all budgets are estimates anyway, but the numbers that we voted on tonight are not accurate. And that's, that's all I have to say on that.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone in person. I'd first like to congratulate and thank Chris Galatas for his appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board and Carrie Beebe to the Westland Board of Review. I say it, I think every time I congratulate someone and thank them, that their act of citizenship is a debt to our community and we greatly appreciate it. The only thing that I'm going to say today on our resolution is that my religion is mine and your religion is yours. And when we bring our religion to, to a forum like this, we have to recognize that each of us carry with us our own faith in recognizing. And for me, I was taught to love my neighbor. I may not agree with what my neighbor does, but I was taught to love them. And so I think it's important that in a compassionate city, that we extend our arms to each of the people that live here and make it a welcoming community for everyone. And for those who don't like my decision, that's okay. I'll pray for you if you pray for me, if you so choose. But I'm certainly not going to put my religious beliefs in front of what I believe is a societal Thank you.
Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening and thank you. I had a lot to say tonight in regards to accomplishments and things that we have done together as a body and as a council, but I'm going to save those for the next council meeting because we've been here for quite some time and those that know me know I can be a long talker. First, I want to thank Dan Statchow, Vic Baur, and every one of the veterans who put in the hard work to making the parade a huge success this year. I know it was super important to a lot of people in our community, those, you know, who served or those who've lost a loved one in combat, to have that parade come back this year. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions, we were not able to do that last year, but thank you to everybody who, you know, dedicated themselves to bringing the parade back and thank you to Dan and Councilman Londo for hosting that on WLND. I agree with the mayor's sentiments. They did a great job hosting the parade. And thank you to all the veterans who worked hard to bring that back. I want to thank all of my colleagues for passing the resolution in support of Pride Month here in the city of Westland. This resolution is about tolerance. This resolution is about building off of the values that we set forth when we passed diversity, equity, and most of all, inclusion ordinance here in the city. It is about making sure that everybody feels welcome in the community. And it is about also saying that LGBTQIA individuals, they are our friends, they are our neighbors, they are our family members. This is not a lifestyle choice that people made. You were born gay, you were born lesbian, you were born transgender. You didn't choose to wake up one day and decide that you were going to live out some lifestyle. This is not a choice that people make. This is a, this is a, this is how people were born. And this resolution today and prior resolutions that have been passed prior to myself and Councilwoman Rukowski getting on council reaffirm that. They reaffirm the acceptance, they reaffirm tolerance, they reaffirm inclusivity and love of our neighbors, love of our family members, love of our friends. And tonight, I want to speak into the record the name of Mary Laven. And many of you may not know Mary Laven and most watching at home will not know. Only a few who are in my family will know who Mary is, who are Westland residents. And Mary was my cousin. She was a teacher at Ann Arbor Huron High School. She was a Spanish teacher and she was gay. And when we found out in our family that Mary was gay, we welcomed her with love, with tolerance, with acceptance and open arms. And anytime she brought her girlfriend around to our family, to a party, to an event, to a function, we welcomed that girlfriend of hers with the same acceptance and tolerance and love that we welcomed Mary with. Unfortunately, she is, is no longer with us. She has passed away. But I wanted to make sure to speak her name into the record because instead of just holding up a book or holding up a Bible and waving it in our face to proclaim that they're holier than thou or holier than us, Mary, she, she held up love. She held up compassion. She held that up in people's face. She held her arms open to accept anyone, whether they liked her or accepted her or not. That was the kind of woman Mary was. That's the way she led her life with honor, with compassion, with love for one and others. So my vote in support of this resolution tonight on the consent calendar, recognizing Pride Month here in the city of Westland, wasn't just for me, wasn't just for residents here in our community who are in the LGBTQIA community. It was also for Mary and the love and the compassion that she showed me and that she showed the world. So I'll have more to speak on at the next council meeting in regards to the budget and in regards to the things that we've accomplished here in the city of Westland. But thank you to all of my colleagues for supporting ITMM tonight in support of the Pride resolution. And thank you to Councilman Hart and Councilman Londo for bringing that up and putting it on the agenda in the first place. And with that, I wish everybody a happy pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Protem Londo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. It was great to see everyone's faces, familiar faces. We had a packed house, had about 60 people here tonight, so it was great to see you. So first of all, I want to thank the staff at City Hall that accommodated everyone here tonight and spaced out the seats so everyone's safe. I also want to congratulate Chris Galatas, who was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also Carrie Beebe, who was appointed to the Board of Review. The mayor's office also sent out a list, a lengthy list of names of other appointments that were recently appointed as well. So congratulations to them and thank you for stepping up to serve. Let's see here, I want to thank Vic Baur and members of his executive board for the very generous donation tonight, over $15,000 to our police and fire department. So that money will be spread throughout the community, so it's staying right here in Westland. So we greatly appreciate Vic Baur and the Wayne Fort Civic League and the executive board. It's also great to see so many neighbors come out on Saturday for Chief J. Drewzik's first neighborhood, neighborhood safety meeting. I thought it went really well. I think the chief and his command staff were able to answer any questions that they had, share concerns, share real-time crime statistics for that general area. I thought it was a great idea and I know the mayor was out there, myself and Councilman Gabbout were out there. So I greatly appreciate the folks that came out and I'm looking forward to the next one. Also, thank you to my colleagues for supporting the LBGTQ plus resolution tonight. I was happy to bring this resolution forward with support from a few of my colleagues to get it on the agenda. Greatly appreciate that and I know Mayor Wild was in support of it as well, so thank you to the mayor. It was great to have the Memorial Day Parade back. It's spoken about a few times tonight. It was, couldn't have picked a better day to have it. It was beautiful out, it wasn't too hot. We had a nice parade and a great ceremony after. And I want to thank Vietnam veteran Dan Statchow, who's in the audience, who was my, my color guard, I guess we'll call him, my color commentator. He did a fantastic job, so thank you, Dan, for keeping me in line and making sure I didn't talk too much. And if you want to see, or see the, see the coverage, if you weren't able to attend, Councilman Gabbout's laughing. He was able to do that, yes. But if you want to see how Dan kept me in line, you can watch it on WLND. Give a shout out to those guys. So thank you to them for being out there. You know, they're out there early in the morning and set up and they're out there long after buddy, long after everyone leaves. So thank you to WLND for putting that event on and covering it. It'll be on WLND and our YouTube channel. I also want to thank our council president, Jim Hart. He was invited to be the keynote speaker at the city of Wayne's Memorial Garden or their memorial, what would you call it? It's not really a garden, their memorial. He had a fabulous speech and it really brought tears to a lot of people's eyes to the importance of Memorial Day and he speaks about it all the time and gets very, he's very passionate about it. So thank you, President Hart, for your kind words. Standing ovation for him. Couple more things, I want to thank the, congratulate all the 2021 graduates. You know, driving around town, I see a lot of our pavilions are booked up here in the city. Outside Tatten Park, there's been people doing photo shoots and things of that nature. So congratulations to all the 2021 graduates, whether you're from Wayne Westland Community Schools or even the Levona Schools. Lastly, thank you to Dan Block, Steve Smith, the entire finance team, also Deputy Mayor Reddy, Mayor Wild, and all my colleagues on the city council for the budget, the whole process. It's lengthy and collaboration is key to a successful budget and implementing it, implementing new ideas and programming to the community. My vote no, I spoke about it earlier, but I'll just say it again. I thought it was very unprofessional to drop an ambush politic or ambush vote on us without giving us time to research and you saw what happened. We had four items that were affected by it. We're scrambling up here. That's unprofessional, in my opinion. So while I appreciate, I didn't mention anybody's name, so thank you. And I also, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. Very unprofessional, as you can see. You know, I respect my colleagues. I feel like I got an open door policy to all my colleagues, so the fact that, you know, I didn't even know anything about it from anybody was kind of a shock to me, but I just want to take this opportunity to say I support our police department wholeheartedly. I support all of our department heads. I'll make sure to reach out to the mayor's office and all of the directors tomorrow, let them know why I voted no, but thank them for their hard work on the budget. You know, it shouldn't have came to that. So thank you very much and everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. 10 o'clock, we've made it. I won my bet. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, Councilwoman Green, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. First time we were able to do it in person in a long, quite a while. A few things, of course, I'd like to congratulate Chris and Carrie as well for their appointments. Serving on boards and commissions is a great opportunity and a great, a great way to serve your city and also a good way to get more involved and understand kind of how some things work. When you're standing outside looking in, some things seem very strange, but as you kind of understand some of the processes that go into things, you start to understand. Maybe it's not as weird as I thought, I just didn't understand. So, but it's also a great honor to do that and we're also very thankful for those that serve on these boards and commissions are vitally important. Without you on the boards and commissions, many parts of the city would grind to a halt. So we thank you. Please continue. It's a good way to serve your city and maybe serve in other capacities in the future if you decide to, decide to do so. It's a bunch of things I wanted to talk about today. I think for the most part, the council did hold things together pretty well today. Professionalism has always been something that's been really important to me. I always believe you attack the argument, not the person. That's how debate is won, but you also do it respectfully and tactfully. So I think most of that happened today. I'm not thrilled with how we did this budget amendment for the police officer, but I did support the police off, the adding of the police officer. I'm not thrilled about how it got done. I've never been happy to support that kind of tactic. I'd love to get down and sit down beforehand. If you're, if you're planning on doing that, let's sit down and talk about it beforehand so we can kind of clean up all the other stuff that goes along with it. I did support it because I support, I do back the blue. I'm a strong supporter of the police department. We agreed we had to add them, but yeah, I struggled with that, but I knew that I was just going to do it and guess to see how it played out and I guess we all saw it play out. And it hurt pretty bad. So maybe this is a good lesson for us to maybe get all of our ducks in a row beforehand moving forward so that we don't have a situation like this again. And maybe seeing it play out is something that maybe we really need to go through. You kind of don't know where the corner of the dresser is till you stub your toe in it once or twice. So there you are. So now we stubbed our toe in it pretty good, so we'll be better at doing this in the future. And I hope we all can do that. Other than that, thank you all for coming here today, spending so much time with us. We're not alone. So, so you stuck it out too. That means it was just important news it was to us. And the last thing I'll leave you with is nothing for any of you, it's thanks to my lovely wife, Linda Hart, Linda Honey, Linda, the queen of hearts. We celebrated 25 years last week. So thank you, Lou. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?